Okay. I'll call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, March 14th. One quick announcement, our town manager is ailing and will not be with us tonight. He had, we had a long meeting this morning and he went home looking paler than pale, so.
We're glad he's not here.
Yeah, we're sort of glad he's not here and affecting all the rest of us.
That's good.
So, we'll go right into the agenda. The first item, our approval of minutes from prior meetings. We do not yet have the minutes for the November 9th and 17th meetings of our Select Board. We do have the executive session meetings of February 9th in front of us. I'd entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second for discussion, the only correction.
Okay.
I was noted as absent, indeed I was absent at the start of the executive session, but I arrived in the middle.
That is correct.
And that means that the vote at the end for adjournment should be five instead of four.
Okay.
That's right.
Yes.
I took those notes.
I didn't.
Really?
Okay.
I thought that was...
Yeah, alright. With those two, do we have any other adjustments to make to this set? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting as amended? That is unanimous. We do not have yet the minutes for February 9th meeting. A draft was sent out to us, but we have not had sufficient time to review those, so we will table that also until our March meeting. We do have the executive session for February 29th, which is before us, and I entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? That is unanimous. We've got some announce, well, actually, our next regular Select Board meeting will be Monday, April 11th, 7:00 PM, right here in the Opera House Meeting Room, and it will be televised and streamed, well, actually, I think it's now just going to be streamed. Jeff, we are still experiencing...
Broken.
Broken, okay. It will be streamed live, and we're streaming all of our meetings that are conducted here, and we encourage everybody to go to the appropriate site, livestream.com/RockportMaine. Some announcements, I'm not going to read them all. All the announcements are in the agenda for this evening. A couple that I do want to mention. Tomorrow night, 6:00 PM here, there will be a presentation for Solarize Maine, or Solarize Midcoast Maine. This is an opportunity to encourage people to put solar power on their roofs or adjacent to their buildings and things like that. There is enlisted in the agenda, in the agenda there, the website to go through for more information about that. Not really particular to this, but the Rockport and Camden Select Boards have challenged each others to a food drive. It will be conducted Saturday, April 9th, at the Camden, Hanaford Food Store. You can also drop off canned goods, boxed goods, and things like that at both the Camden and Rockland, Rockport Town Office. Actually, it says in the agenda, it says Rockland, but it's Rockport.
And I have a couple of things to do with that.
Okay.
If you're...
We're going to discuss it again on the manager's report, I believe.
So, yeah, so I believe we're also going to be able to make cash or credit donations at Hanaford, so you can purchase gift cards that will go to the food bank as part of Hanaford's donation. And I believe that we will be able to borrow a Hanaford cart to put in our town office for people to put food into, but we have to make sure there's room at the town office and everything. But I think we got that.
Yep. This is all part of the 125th anniversary of Rockport, that Camden thinks that they can so outdo us, but, you know, as we found out on the blood bank, that they just can match us, that's about all they can do. Moving ahead, candidate nomination papers are avail, will be available on Monday, March 21st. See the town clerk for them. There is one three-year term on the Select Board currently held by the member to my left, Tracy Lee Murphy. There are three terms on the Budget Committee currently held by Ms. Sharon Stone and Mrs. Jan Rosenbaum and John Beeman. Two three-year terms on the Library Committee, held by Mrs. Stephanie Cumbel and Kathy, Kate Monroe. And one, a one-year term as Director of MSAD 28, equal with CSD, currently held by Gretchen Midcoast Solid Waste, and this deals with the fact that our agreement with the Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation terminates on March 31st, 2018. We are in the process of looking for a new vendor or acceptor of our municipal solid waste. Those things that we put in the yellow bags. There will be public meetings regarding that on Monday, March 21st, 6:00 PM, right here in the Opera House. That will be streamed. And also, there will be a follow-up directed mostly to the members of the four-town Select Boards on Monday, April 4th, 6:00 PM, again, right here in the meeting room, and to be We've got a couple of changes here. The Planning Board is moving their monthly meetings to the Fourth Wednesday. This month, they will be meeting on Wednesday, March 23rd, 5:30 PM here. That is actually, at the same time, the Zoning Board of Appeals is scheduled to meet here, but I've been told that the ZBA, their tentative meeting has been canceled due to a lack of business. The Planning Board will also be holding a public hearing on the land use warrant articles that will appear on the June warrant. They will be holding that Wednesday, April 6th, 5:30 PM, here at the Opera House, and that will be televised. Some upcoming budget workshops and meetings everybody should be aware of. The Budget Review, we will be holding a workshop, actually, we already held one. I'm looking at these dates wrong.
Yeah, we've got...
Well, yeah, a couple of them are already gone. But the Select Board, us, will be holding our discussions on the budget on Wednesday, March 16th, 2016. We have an executive session that will begin at 3:00. As soon as that's done, we will move into the Budget Workshop. That's where we go, we're going through the budget line by line and making any adjustments that we see necessary. Later that evening, hopefully at 7:00 PM, we will hold an actual meeting where we will take our consensus votes on the budget and place any or line out any amounts that we want to have appearing on the town, June Town Warrant. That's on the 16th, that's this Wednesday. Hopefully, we will begin that at 7:00 PM. That will be streamed. And then the Budget Committee itself will hold its meeting and votes on what we are recommending on Tuesday, March 22nd, and if they need to, on Wednesday, March 23rd, 6:00 PM here on both dates. They will actually be over at the Richardson Room in the Town Office. The Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee meetings, they will be meeting this Wednesday, March 16th, and Thursday, March 17th, both at 7:00 PM, to hear presentations by the architects.
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM, yeah.
11:00 AM to 3:00 PM in this room.
Did I say 11:00?
You did, no, you said 7:00 PM.
Oh, 7, oh.
But I already have a meeting at 7:00 PM, so I'm already double booked, I don't need trouble.
You are correct. My mistake.
That's okay.
They start at 11:00 AM, both days, anticipate being done by about 2:30 to 3:00 o'clock on both days. They are hearing three of the architects on one day and the other three architects with their presentation the next day. Wednesday, March 23rd, they will be also meeting here at 11:00 AM. And all of these are televised, well, streamed at the livestream.com/RockportMaine. And then Thursday, March 24th, 7:00 PM, they will be here making their recommendation as to how we should proceed, right here in the, in our room, in this meeting room. Do we have any other announcements at this time? Okay. I'm going to go forward. Do we have any agenda changes? Nope. Then, we're going to go, public comment. A public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone wishing to make, yes, we have someone wishing to make comment tonight?
There are handouts.
Big handout for your proposal.
Hi, I'm Pascal Aviu, and tonight I'm here to advocate for the fourth of the children. Mary Ansberry died January 1st, 1855, aged 10 months, 12 days. And her cousins, Marion, Lizzie, and Lily, the children of CS and M. H. Packard. Marion died in 1854, aged 11 months. Lizzie died in 1858, at age 11 months. And Lily died in 1867, aged four years. The children are buried on, used to be their family's property on Ansberry Hill. In the early 1990s, a member of the town cemetery committee arranged to have their headstones moved to Brooks Monuments to be repaired, but in bad condition. The state law requires that those headstones be returned to their original location within six months. When Mr. Williams of Brooks Monuments went to, brought the, the headstones back to their original location, the person who owned the property at that time refused to allow them to put them back. He was getting ready to sell the property, and he did not want people to know that there were burials on that property. The headstones, there are pictures attached, are still at Brooks Monuments, and I neglected all the, Bob, the someone, he'd actually been paid as yet, for his work. But the Select Board has two options. They can return the braid markers to the location where they belong, or they can get a court order and have the bodies exhumed and moved to Ansberry Hill Cemetery. The Packards do have a lot there, I understand it's full, however, but the Ansberries, we don't know where they're buried. So, I gave a copy of this report to the town manager two years ago, and nothing has been done as yet. The current owners of the lot are aware that there are burials up there, as are the owners. And it's time for the town to step up and mark these graves.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone else wishing to make comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's definitely Ash, Rockport resident. I'm making this comment because I don't know whether this item is on the agenda, and if it is, that, just to make that, obviously, we'll wait till it comes up, but the issue is, there is a rumor that I've been hearing around town about property next to the one library site of the library possibly becoming available for the town to purchase. If that's something you're going to talk about later in this meeting, I'll step down, but if not, I would ask the Select Board, make some response to that, that rumor that seems to be going around town, because it seems to be very timely and affects all the other processes that were going through in terms of figuring out the needs for the library.
That is not on tonight's agenda. And if that is indeed true, we would have to meet in executive session to discuss how we wish to proceed. Your implication is that it's available for purchase by the town? Is that...
What I'm hearing is that it may be available. I don't know the details, but it certainly seems like an important thing for the Select Board to look into.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to make public comment? Alright, hearing none, then we will move forward to the Town Manager's Report. As I mentioned earlier, the Town Manager is not here to grace us with his illness. Instead, I will read the report as he has presented it. "A great deal of my time in the past month has been taken up with budgets, which we are in the middle of now. In addition, the Midcoast Solid Waste Board and Executive Committee has also taken up a lot of my time with seven different meetings this month. I have also attended the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee meetings and dealing with other library planning questions. As you know, the 125th celebration was a huge success, and I thank you, to the members of the committee and other volunteers that made the first phase of this something to remember. The town will participate in a food drive to benefit the Camden Area Food Pantry, which will be held on Saturday, April 9th. We will have a basket in the Town Office for people to make donations the week prior to the 9th. The Keep Rockport Beautiful Group is gearing up for a big cleaning, this, cleaning up event this April. Last year, more than 100 volunteers helped pick up trash on the roadside of Rockport Roads."
Do we have any way for people watching at home or here in the audience to be directed to a place to become involved? Where would I go if I wanted to go and pick up trash in April, too? Who do I get in touch with?
I know they have a Facebook page.
Yes.
That's pretty active.
Because I know they do my street, I didn't do it last year, and if other people, I just want to make sure that we know how to get in touch with them to get out there and get picking up.
Go to, yeah.
Keep Rockport Beautiful.
Keep Rockport Beautiful, Facebook.
On Facebook. I, they may have, maybe other places, but I know they're there.
Yes.
Thank you.
And they have, they picked up a lot of trash in the past years. You look at our roads and they seem pretty clean, but in the spring and in the fall, it can get kind of dirty as things have accumulated, but they are doing a heck of a good job on doing this, and we really encourage them. And you said this was going to be April 2nd?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought I heard...
I said this April, I wanted to know when it was.
Ah, okay. Moving forward, planning, the Solarize Maine project will roll out this, March 15th, here at the Opera House, at 6:00 PM. Building permits and applications are very slow. Jamie is working on the sewer ordinance and other ordinances with the Ordinance Review Committee. He's helping to develop a CDBG grant request for Avina Botanicals. Actually, we have that in our packet tonight. And he's participated in an affordable housing audit. Fire Department, the department received a grant in, from, received a grant in the amount of $6,200 from State Farm Insurance in support of Fire Protection Week. They will use the money to buy supplies and a Sparky the Fire Dog costume to be used in the, in the schools. The Fire Department responded to a call at the former CMCA building for a broken pipe that flooded the basement. Not only did they get the water shut off on one of the coldest days of the year, but they did their best to get the water out of the building, limiting further damage to the building. The Fire Department, with their quick response, put a stop to a structural fire on Lake Chickawaki that could have been a lot worse than it was. With a lack of snow and dry weather, we had our first grass fire this year. The Fire Department was our first, was our first department to go through the voluntary S, a BLS SHAPE inspection. I have no idea what that means. They found nine minor violations, most of which were fixed the next day. Jason will be working with Mike, Mike Young of the Public Works, to get ready for the, to do the Public Works Department. This will help get our SHAPE certification and lower our workers' comp rate over time. Finance, Megan, our finance director, has been working almost exclusively on the budget this past month. The bond application has been submitted. This is for the infrastructure bond, which was voted on a year ago. Cash flow is getting tight until cash bill, tax bills go out and money starts to come in again. Public Works, in spite of the easy winner, and he puts "easy" in quotes, "The storms we have had have been enough of a problem to generate several all-nighter events and has used up a significant amount of sand, salt, and overtime." Of course, nowhere near as bad as last year. With the good weather, the crew has been doing a lot of roadside ditching, and this has paid off in that when we have a lot of rain, as we did earlier this month, actually, I think he's referring to February, washouts are very minimal. At the library, we received 11 responses to the RFQ for architectural firms to help plan for a new library. Those were narrowed down to six, with two being local firms. The Library Planning Committee will be hearing the presentations from the six firms on March 16th and 17th. The library held an open house at the new facility, and I'll say that it was very successful. Ben, our librarian, taught two classes at the school in adult education. There's been an uptick in library visits. There were 18 applicants for the deputy director position in the library. The library is planning their annual Easter egg hunt, and there is a concert sponsored by the library here at the Opera House on March 17th. And just a little bit additional information, this is some local people, Skip Gorman, I believe is the name of the gentleman and his wife, they are doing a program on the Celtic roots of US cowboy music. Should be very interesting, it'll be upstairs. I encourage everybody to show up. The police met with the school to review their safety plan. They have been working with area agencies to apply for a regional BYRNE grant, that spelled B-Y-R-N-E, and the officers participated in a search warrant and barricaded subject training session.
What is a BYRNE grant?
I do not know.
Perfect.
Jamie, would you have any idea?
No.
Okay.
They're giving a presentation tonight, aren't they?
No, they're not. Not the library.
Oh, the school. I'm sorry, I was thinking the school safety plan, it's a different line after that got there.
Something with, I know it's coordinated with other departments locally, it's not just our department, and he mentions it's regional.
Yeah.
But I don't recall what it is.
General assistance, we've been very busy with GA over the past month with two or three quests, requests for assistance every day. TC/TX, Tax Collector Tax. Foreclosure notices have gone out and payments have been coming in. The excise tax is up 16%. That's what we have collected so far this year, is up 16% over last year. Assessing, personal property mailings have gone out in the mail. Kerry has spent his first full month serving both towns, and it appears to be going very well. There is one appeal to the Board of Assessment and Review. And in Harbor, Abby is back from her maternity leave on March 4th, and she has been attending Harbor Master School in Castine with her deputy. I'd be glad to answer any questions that may be by the manager, but I can't guarantee much of a...
Except a good answer, yes.
Can I ask you a quick one? Under Jamie's planning, participate in an affordable housing audit. What do we get, at the end of the audit, what metrics do we get back, and is that going to be useful for us?
It was very informal. We got a lot of ideas about where to look in our ordinance for barriers to affordable housing, which we'll follow up on later tonight, and some basically gathering of information for a round table that we'll participate in later in the spring, and maybe that will produce more of a handbook or a set of recommendations. But for now, they gathered some Rockport case studies, and we'll just sort of put them in a mill with the other case studies that are coming in from participating towns.
Thank you. Anything else? Then we'll move forward. We have no unfinished business, nor do we have a public hearing this month. We have a couple of committee resignations. One is Sarah Volkey, which actually, we had apparently received the written letter on it earlier, and it's not in our packet tonight. We also have, and it just came in, resignation by Lynn Bannister for the Conservation Commission. So I would be interested in, we need to accept the resignations to make them effective. Do we have a motion?
What's the story on Sarah? Because we, this was on the agenda last month, and we didn't accept it because we didn't have anything...
She just hadn't put it in yet.
Yeah.
Do we have anything now?
She had said that she was going to, and it sounded like you said that she did.
I thought we had received one, but I haven't seen.
I've had, I've had good communications back and forth. It is for sure her intent to resign. She also does intend to try to pass on knowledge to the Rec Committee that's getting stood up into a better place.
Did it email? I don't remember seeing an actual email.
She said she was going to hand bring it into the office, some sort of note, letter of resignation.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
So should we...
Oh, but please do, because if we do, then I can get someone else to fill her spot. I can't fill her spot until she's resigned, and she totally wants to.
Well, based on Owen's word, then I'll move that we accept the resignation of Sarah Volkey from the Recreation Committee and have the Board sign a letter expressing thanks for her service.
Second.
Any further...
With the caveat that this is the only time we take Owen at his word.
The only time, wow.
I'll prove you wrong.
And I would say it is, it's helpful for us to have a written resignation, to be sure, because we don't want to...
Any further on Sarah's? No? All in favor of accepting?
I know it's tough, Jeff, I know.
You're as bad as a Republican can be. Okay, keep moving.
We also have the resignation, and I passed it, I emailed it along to you, I have it in front of me here. The resignation by Lynn Bannister from the Conservation Commission. Basically, she says she needs to devote more time to her family responsibility. She has been involved for a period, quite a period of time, and I would hope that we have a motion to accept her resignation with a thanks, et cetera, et cetera.
I move to accept the resignation of Lynn Bannister from the Conservation Commission and have the Board sign a letter expressing thanks for her long service.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I will say that she pounds feet to the fire on the water quality things and has been an excellent secretary of that committee, producing very clear and concise minutes, so she will be missed.
Yeah, she said, does say in her letter here, "I'm especially excited that Bob Kennedy has connected with organizations in other towns on Penobscot Bay, and hopefully, our watershed project will be helpful in this regard." Any further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. We have three applications for committee service tonight, two of them to appear on the Ad Hoc Technology Committee and one on the Recreation Committee. The first we have is Deborah Hall, a resident of 150 Russell, to appear, to serve on the Ad Hoc Technology Commission. And she's here tonight.
Yeah, she's just...
Deborah, would you, our, our normal process is that for applicants, we ask them to step up to the microphone so that we can grill them in great detail.
And then thank them.
And then thank them for putting up with our grilling, but, yes, we, we do have your application here before us. We're glad that you have relocated here to Maine rather recently, but...
Yeah, of course, we've had our house here for 17 years, but we were splitting our time. Yeah, we were splitting our time between Naples, Florida and Rockport, but we're back here full-time. You know, Rick had contacted me and asked me to participate, help out with the fiber optic project, then he asked me if I would be willing to help on a, I guess, a broader technology committee, which I have to say, I'm not quite sure what all that entails, but I had said yes. So, and, you know, just briefly, I was responsible, I was president of a board of directors, two boards of directors in Naples, and we were successful in getting fiber optic to 541 homes there. That involved the selection of the provider, overseeing the installation, design of the system, and I also negotiated the contract because I am an attorney on the side. And so, anyway, that was, I'm not going to say that I'm a technologist, as I said, I'm an attorney by training, but I did spend several years pretty deep in fiber optic matters, so, so it was because of that that Rick, I think, had approached me. So, I'm very interested in helping the town out in any way that I can, in any way that I can offer assistance. I can offer assistance.
We're very appreciative of that. Questions?
No, she's, you know, she comes to us with tremendous accolades and abilities and we're looking forward to putting you to work.
Well, and I'm really glad that after attending a number of our meetings, which I know you've been to a number of them, that you were still willing to step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Any further?
No.
No? Does anyone wish to make a motion to accept her application?
So moved, because we don't have an end date, it's a, it's a-
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee.
So, yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Boom.
Thank you.
Appreciate your volunteering. We also have Emmett Sutton, application. He's coming to the podium now, also wishing to serve on the Technology Committee. And he indicates that you're a former owner and manager of a technology company.
Two of them.
Two, oh, all right. Your background, brief, very briefly?
It's technology, I've done just about everything. I've been primarily a contractor and consultant to the Department of Defense and I'm still sliding into retirement.
Yes, I can quite agree with what you are saying there about retirement, yeah.
Right, but I think I have background in a lot of the technologies, but the strange thing is, I think the biggest job I've done in the last thirty years has been to work with negotiations over things that the Department of Defense would be doing, say with NATO. And then, I'm not allowed to say.
Understood.
I hope we don't need that level of negotiation around here.
Do we, any questions?
What it does is having your experience and having Doug's experience lends the effort to communicate all the nuances of the possibilities. It lends it a lot of gravitas and experience, so it's, you know, it's wonderful to have you on board as well.
Thank you very much. I presume that you're going to give a charge to this committee. I'm very new.
Actually, we already did, we gave a charge based on an earlier meeting that we had held. And I think, Jeff, you can probably get it to him, can't you?
Yes, yes, I'd be happy to.
That'd be very nice.
We had expanded it recently to also include, at least for the next several months, dealing with the fiber optic issue.
Right. Yeah, we've taken a hard, hard turn into a different highway for a little while and we're accelerating down that highway for a minute.
No, it's very interesting to me, I'd like to see it come. Thank you.
Other questions? Do we have a motion to appoint?
Some moved.
And second.
Okay, as it's an ad hoc committee, there is no termination date. If it develops into a regular committee, then they will be on a staggered cycle, but- We have the motion on the floor, it's been seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much, Emmett. Look forward to seeing you around. We also have the application by Craig Wilson to serve on the Recreation Committee. Craig is here, he is, he works at MRC, as we can see from your jacket, and wishes to help with this. I will note that Craig is not a resident of Rockport, but he does work and manage a facility here in Rockport, the MidCoast Recreation Center. So with that, do we have questions or do you, would you like to?
Well, I spend most of my waking hours in Rockport, I don't know if that counts. I have a daughter who's a senior at Lincoln Academy and as soon as she graduates, we'll be moving up this, this way. So I've run the MidCoast Rec Center for the past two years, YMCA's for twenty-five years prior to that, so I'm passionate about wellness and expanding the opportunities and helping the town move forward in collaboration with other nonprofits.
Does, does Rec Committee have a chair yet?
Rec Committee doesn't, Rec Committee has a chair.
So have they gotten a chance to meet?
So we have had one, we've had two meetings, one of which actually had a quorum enough. The person who is technically the chair has not showed up to those meetings, but we are looking forward to when he does. I've chatted with him and I believe he'll be there at our-
You can pick him up and drive him over.
Next meeting, I'd be happy to, actually, he wouldn't have to walk far to get to it. But yeah, I mean, so we've had one meeting, Craig's been really instrumental, I mean, he's letting us use a spot in MRC. And just by way of clarification, if we approve him, we still have majority Rockport residents on that committee. So we have three Rockport residents that are on that committee voting members and we would have two that work within Rockport, nine to five, but live in other towns.
And you're giving them full voting.
Yes, I believe we'll get onto that later on down in the agenda, but as it stands right now, yes, but we have to vet that out further about all that good stuff. But I'm happy to have him, he's been great thus far and I'm looking forward to it.
You want to make a motion to appoint him?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we had a rush here. We'll give this one to Jeff. Okay, further discussion? All in favor of appointing? Craig, thank you very much.
Nice to see that coming.
See, you see my excitement, you see my excitement?
No, okay. Our next item here, and this goes back to the Avina Botanicals, vote to request, vote on request to support and facilitate a CDBG grant, Economic Development Grant by Avina Botanicals. And we have the representatives from Avina here. Very glad to see you this evening. As I read this, the CDBG grant would be ninety thousand dollars of a hundred and eighty thousand dollar project?
Yep.
I did read in the newspaper today that at least some of the stumbling blocks are being moved out of the way again.
Yes, that's correct.
Would you explain to us briefly what this request is going to do?
Sure, and so I'm Amy LaShore and this is Deb Sewell, the founder of Avina Botanicals. And what we're looking to do with this grant is to be able to hurdle FDA requirements for production. We had to build a new building and incurred a lot of costs with that. The average FDA estimate for compliance is about forty-six thousand dollars every year for, and usually those businesses are quite big and can swallow that, we are not. So we would be using the grant in the following ways. Firstly, we're looking to add three new year-round positions for gardeners in production. We are looking to implement and maintain a new inventory management software system. The funds would help create and implement a new marketing program. We are looking to expand into new markets. We are looking to rebrand and repackage our current offering, our entire product line. We are looking to hire a sales firm and to represent our products throughout the Northeast. We've started that and we've already gotten into ten Whole Foods at this point. So those grant funds would really help us increase production to match our new annual FDA compliance costs.
Do we have questions?
I guess I would ask you to address the article that was in the newspaper today about some of those hurdles being cleared, how does that change any of the material that you put in your application? Does that mean that you can allocate these resources to something different or are the problems still the same?
The article in the Bangor Daily News does say that, yes, that we did hurdle the FDA requirements. It does require the FDA to come out and see that we've, and closed the case on us, but yes, we've done everything that they've asked us to. It does not change anything about the plan to have to increase production to meet these new costs that happen annually. And I just want to add that this actually doesn't cost the city anything, except for just a few hours of administration time.
Right.
I mean, we've been through-
We've been through this before, yeah.
-CDBG grants, so I guess I would ask Jamie, is, how is this different from CDBG grants we've applied for and received before, as far as the town's side of it?
I think it's very similar, in fact, Avina's been through this process before and been successful with it. And I would just say that many of the community development block grant projects, that's what CDBG stands for, are in fact, community development projects. This is the economic development program from that same source of funds. And by economic development, I always mean, there's someone in particular who's getting the benefit of the town's involvement. There's a certain employer with certain investment that's going to result in a certain number of jobs and the number of jobs created is monitored as you go forward. So a community development application typically, that's like granite curbs and streetlights, you don't know which property owner on either side is going to suddenly decide to invest in their property because of this improvement. Here, we're putting human resources only, but the town's resources into a particular business in the town. So as Amy has said, it's very modest time commitment, the funding is passing through the town and some of the public notice procedures, including scheduling what will be called a special town meeting, but I don't want to make anybody nervous, it's not a town meeting like we think of normally. If we were a chartered city, we would just call it a public hearing, but it's a public hearing with broad public notice where all of the deliverables under the grant will be ready for more close inspection by the public. And looking tonight for a more general expression of support from the Select Board, in particular for the investment of staff time, even though, again, it's not, not the biggest project for us in our group. And we'll make you aware of the date of the public hearing, AKA special town meeting, as soon as we have it. It'll be in the middle of April, more or less, or towards the end of the month of April, and the grant itself is due May thirteenth.
Will that meeting be rolled into something else or will it be totally unto itself?
It'll be a very quiet forty-five minutes at most, hanging out in the Richardson Room at the town office.
But we all have to be there?
Nope.
You can have apple cider?
Wow, this is looking good.
You've got to be careful about calling it a special, if it is a special town meeting, then that means we have to elect a moderator and all that kind of stuff.
There's a lot of, that I don't know maybe about that process.
We've, we have had these before.
And I thought we did them as part of regular meetings where that was a part of it.
It sounds smart to do it as part of a regular meeting, I just haven't done it before.
So that's an administrative hurdle, but as far as a monetary hurdle, I know that we went through CDBG, the grant that you guys got, like five, six years ago? Was it that long ago?
I think it was right here, actually.
Right, I think it was, but you guys, I mean, we closed it out, you guys built your facility, the money came through, we didn't even-
That I think was-
After the, the hearing or whatever it's called, it was just done.
Retention of employees.
Right, and then we just, I think we had to vote that we agreed that it was done.
Yeah, and just to say thank you, because we've been here for thirty years quietly doing our work and that the previous grant really helped us, the eight of us, to retain our jobs and now we need help to be able to add three more on so that we can incur all these FDA regulations that thirty years ago I didn't have to deal with, now I do. So, thank you.
I was very glad to hear that you're able to expand in productive workforce.
And that's a question on the, because for the town, if everything goes according to plan, it's a pass-through financially, but if the terms of the grant are not met, in other words, if the jobs are not provided or don't last the requisite amount of time, what are the consequences of the town for that?
The Department of Economic Community Development, official policy on that is that they're no longer doing the audits for the number of jobs created, but as a technical, I wouldn't even say technical, but as a theoretical matter, they have a clawback provision which would affect the applicant only, but it would certainly involve a lot more hand wringing on our part and extra administration if that were to come to pass. And I would say the biggest long-term effect of such a default in the unlikely occurrence would be, they wouldn't be eligible to try again in the same group. And so just the fact of their track record with the successful application in the past is probably insulation enough for the town and for Avina.
Would it impact future CDBG grants from the town not involving Avina?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't know that for a fact, we certainly want to keep a good working relationship with the-
I ask these questions just because I want to get everything out on the table. It sounds like, you know, the company is on solid ground and I'm not really terribly concerned about it, but I just, there is, there's always a downside to this thing, even if it's remote.
So who signs off on it if they don't come out and do an audit anymore? Who's the one that says, it's done, we're good, we're happy, it's over? Because I remember we had to vote on that, we had to say, oh, good, it's over, we accept the fact that it's done.
I make a statement, a sort of an affidavit at the end, and I'm not actually familiar with whether you wind up voting on it or not.
That the Select Board has voted.
Does that ring a bell?
I thought we had to vote to clear it out.
In the past, but if they changed things like, and prior, and the Sussman House, it wasn't a clawback, it was just a gradual income of money, was it not? So that they could not be out of whack at any given point.
Well, that one, the Sussman House got turned down. It was fresh off the farm. Yeah, it was successful and that was, I think you're right, I think we voted to say, it's done.
Right.
Once the sewer was extended.
Right, once the building was done, just like when your last building, because part of that money was for building, when you got your building done, whoever was came out and said, yes, you put the money into that, you didn't go to Vegas, we're all good. So, I, what, do we need to vote on this?
Well, yes, we do, we need to have a motion to approve, support.
I move to support and facilitate a CDBG Economic Development Grant application for Avina Botanicals as presented.
It's moved and seconded. Yes, Owen.
If I could, Deb, so I am a little bit familiar with what you do and I've researched it a little bit more and it's, it's great all the way around. And you said you've been doing this quietly for thirty years and now we're at this kind of choice point, right? And then you'll hopefully get the grant and we'll go forward. So do me a favor and take a second, close your eyes, where do you see you all in five years? Because, I mean, it's such an interesting and unique kind of niche that you've crafted there, I don't want to lose that as a thing that Rockport can kind of call their own in certain senses, so where do you see it going?
So you're, maybe you're asking me if I was going to become like a Toms of Maine or a Burt's Bees, no. We, the building that we built five years ago was very, very carefully designed to allow us to grow enough, because we knew that at some point, there would be more FDA expenses. We didn't know what that would look like five years ago, we just, with the building, we were planning for that. And then more and more regulations came and Amy is our FDA liaison, she's incredibly skilled at how to navigate terrain that I, I didn't have to know about thirty years ago. So we're going to stay here, we're very committed, you know, we are certified as an organic farm and we've, and we're one of the only farms here in Rockport and I feel very dedicated that we're going to stay here, that we're manufacturing onsite, we're not outsourcing. And both the previous grant and this grant really ensures that we don't have to outsource. There are a lot of herb companies that are outsourcing now because they can't afford these FDA regulations. One in Vermont in particular just happened, they outsourced to Oregon, that's not, you know, we don't want to do that. So for us, this allows us to have the staff that we need, to meet the regulations, to stay right here. This is my home, I mean, I grew up two hours west of here, but this is my home now. And I feel very dedicated to our continuing. And for me, once I'm an old woman and retires, you know, herbalists don't actually really retire. We keep teaching and encouraging the next generation, so I'm already beginning to think about, at some point, the succession planning so that the next generation will carry this business on here. And that way, I think we have a market because there are many people that want to support a smaller scale business and we are a smaller scale business, we're not a huge manufacturing company and we don't want to be that either. We want to stay right here doing our work. So does that answer your question?
No, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Other comments or questions? I'm going to ask because typically, you know, on something like this, it'd be appropriate to ask if anyone in the audience tonight wants to make any other comment regarding this, as I said at the beginning, we do entertain public comment.
You have to vote.
We need to vote. No further discussion? All in favor of the motion to support?
Thank you.
Yep, wish you best success. The next one here, we have the members from MSAD twenty-eight to discuss the plan for the middle school, the project moving forward on that.
Chair, if we can. Hi, I'm Jamie Stone, I'm the principal of the middle school.
Hi, I'm Linda Chilton, I'm on the MSAD twenty-eighth school board, this is my third year on the school board and I think we were here for the first time this, around this case just came up, so I'm going to probably take notes and Jamie's going to talk and hopefully we can answer a lot of questions and hear a lot of what you all think about what we do next.
So we're in the process, as you may- Um, so we're in the process, as you may know, based on Maria's article in the paper, um, this past week, of doing listening tours with different, uh, groups of people around Camden and Rockport to really just raise awareness about the building project, give an update of, as to where we are now, gather feedback from you, and, um, also I hope some representation, because we still are looking for a Rockport member for the building committee. So I'll hit you up at the end when you're right there, excited to join. Um, so we have begun to, to work with, uh, a new phase of a building committee with representation from both towns, um, largely comprised of, um, real estate folks, uh, people that have architect, uh, architecture backgrounds, but really a nice range of people from around both of our towns to, to really make a decision on what's gonna come forth before voters in November twenty seventeen. So, we will meet monthly to look at a couple, um, different poignant pieces. One is the feedback that we received when we did focus groups after the, um, vote was voted down the pr- the past, uh, go-around. Find out what we can glean from that information, uh, the listening tours that we're doing. We have about thirty-five different listening tours, this is one of them scheduled. And then reevaluate the previous plans that were developed to really make a decision about what's, what is the best plan to go forward with November of twenty seventeen. So, we have a couple of questions. We'd just like to throw out there to you and, and get some input from. And then if you have questions for us, just in terms of where we are now, um, we'd be happy to try to answer them best we can. So, we are hopeful that whether we end up with a new facility, a renovated facility, um, or maybe a updated facility, uh, that one of the reasons we want to invest in the building is also for public community use. So one of the questions we've been asking, uh, for input around is, are there needs that could be met by the community either in Rockport or the Camden-Rockport broader community that could be met through the building, being located where it is, more accessible, and/or more updated, that you have, um, feedback for us about in terms of public use?
I actually have a comment on that.
Sure.
Um, when we had the Democratic Caucus upstairs last week, we actually went to the high school and asked them if we could use it, and we were told we had to pay an outrageous amount of money and prove that we had insurance to use it. So for that reason, the person in charge, because we don't have any money in that budget, the Democrats, not we here, um, chose to be here, and it was packed to the rafters. And now, I heard that feedback in the audience a number of times, "I thought we built this high school so it would be for the public's use." And we were to the, I mean, and maybe it's a political thing, I don't know, but, uh, I think that, I, like I said, I heard that a number of times last weekend, that, "I thought we built this high school, I thought we built this gym and this Strong Auditorium for when we had big events, that we could use that space." And, uh, the high school turned us down. And asked for, well, they didn't turn us down, they just told us, we, I think it was eight hundred dollars or something. And that group did not have eight hundred dollars or proof of insurance to do so.
How many people you were hosting?
We ended up with three hundred and something.
The auditor, the Strong Auditorium holds, I believe, eight hundred people in seats. Um, the question that we have for this middle school project is, is an auditorium space?
Well, I mean, to be honest, we couldn't use that middle school auditorium space.
Because-
Because it has to remain in Rockport. But my, my question goes to-
I hear your point, yeah.
We were told eighteen years ago, or whatever it was-
So the question's how much red tape?
That it was gonna be public space, and it's not at the high school, so-
I think that's good feedback, Tracy, and I would-
Right, so to find a way to put that, to, to memorialize that, so that if Camden were to need to use the gym for a large event or whatever, that they don't get, they don't call the superintendent's office and get told, "Well, this is how much money you have to come up with for basically a town event."
Yeah, I think that's good feedback. I will tell you, we have, and, and I can't speak for the high school, but the, the K to eight, MSAD twenty-eight, so K eight, has policies around the use for specific parts of the building that require liability insurance. So the gym and the kitchen are the two areas in our school. I could imagine they'd be similar in a new building. But I hear you, your feedback is like, "How can we get around the red tape to make it a community use building and not put it at a disadvantage either nonprofits or the towns when we wanna gather people?" It's a great gathering space, so I think that's good feedback, and that's something I can bring back to the group.
And, and I think you'll find that, um, that particular thing was, it, it started when I was on the school board, which was, that policy is not, you can't really point the, the school board has a, has a policy manual, it's about, you know, three and a half inches thick. I don't think that that's enumerated in the policy, but it started to become the administration of the high school, kinda like, "We wanna focus on education and, and okay, it's all right to make it mildly, uh, difficult for, for groups to come in and use it." So, uh, it's a, it's probably gonna come down to a conversation between the school board with input like this, and, and the, uh, the administration at the high school. Um, because that's, that was where you could see it tending that way a number of years ago. Uh, by way of explanation on that.
And, and that's fine, I just, like I said, I heard people say, "But we built this high school."
But it, it's also good for you to hear in terms of steering your show.
So, you know, if that's gonna be a selling point, that's gonna be part of this community, then you really have to have policies that find ways for things to become part of the community. Where you can say, "This isn't possible because of X, Y, and Z, and that's the rule, but these other things we can do and we can host because they're an important part of the community."
Right.
What do you anticipate?
Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, what do you anticipate the size of the middle school auditorium to be?
So there, there are two possibilities. One, the original concept that was proposed, uh, last time had around two hundred seats in it. So it's about double the size of the mini theater space we have now. The, the original proposal also had, uh, high school-sized gymnasium, which, again, those are two pieces we're really reevaluating. We've talked about the possibility of a capital campaign to support, uh, having in addition, for instance, instead of having a middle, uh, uh, high school-sized gym, we'd propose a middle school size, do a capital campaign to go, to show good faith to have a larger-sized gymnasium, or in the arts and focused more in the theater spaces, because we have a pretty big, um, musical and arts program. So, um, it's possible to hold up to two hundred people, but that's also, will all be reevaluated, because I think part of the feedback we, we had was, the overall cost of the building was too much for the communities to bear in terms of the final cost of the building. Along those same lines, reevaluating, looking at, um, not including the Mary E. Taylor Building in that renovation or rebuild, or new build, because it was, uh, it was over three million dollars to include that in the project. So how to take that dollar amount down by, you know, a few million dollars, make it more, um, possibly manageable over time, and also a little later as debt service falls off. So, there could be, um, some cuts made to size and public spaces. So that's the, you know, that's the work we'll do in the building committee, is trying to figure out which of those are the most important, which is really why I bring the question to you about the community use, because I do think our building is used pretty heavily and our fields are, but at no level compared to what the high school use is because of the number of students. Um, but I know we've, we've donated, we donate lots of time to lots of nonprofit organizations like Boy Scouts and other community organizations that use the facility on the weekends or during the week. So, the hope is to have good space in the public area so we can be a community center, um, in addition to providing good academic programs.
Yeah, on, on that line, that, and I, you know, this is what I have been told.
Sure.
Not that I have any proof of this, that the, like, the ball fields there, uh, have been declared off limits for use outside of ta- uh, school hours or for non-school, uh, uses, like, you know, for the Little League and things like that.
So we, we actually do have Five Towns Little League shares our fields. Um, my daughter plays Five Towns Little Leagues, they practiced over there a few times last year. It depends on the, the schedule of events, so if we're away and we have games offsite and the fields are open, and we can work a schedule, we allow other organizations to come over. Five Towns has liability coverage, so they can safely use the fields if there's any injury. Uh, but we do try to, we are open. Five Towns is a good example of a, of a group that uses our gym and our fields when, um, they're able to. It's hard to schedule, 'cause a lot of times we are right up to dark with our ball field. So, uh, we have two baseball teams and we have a softball team, so we have three teams circulating on two fields. So a lot of times we just don't have the space, but if we do, we absolutely, again, you have to have liability insurance for that field. Um, so that is like, one of those limitation possibilities, but if we're not on it, we give it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Owen?
Two questions. Who's, uh, who would one contact to schedule for that field?
So Ma- Matthew Smith is our athletic director. It's Matthew dot Smith at fivetowns.net.
Great, and, um, I'll try to just like, give you the quick boil-down version, uh, trying to stand up rec committee, my excitement around rec. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to do is create a kinda database of sorts, online portal to better use recreational spaces. And one of the things that was brought up in discussion is, wouldn't it be nice, after someone, uh, reserved a space online through an online portal, um, they then had to click a terms and agreements box to then reserve that space? And the question is, um, is there any way, just off the top of your head, I won't hold you to it at all, that, um, it could be incorporated some sort of terms and agreements that would then circumvent that liability insurance portion that limits the amount or what people can do on those fields?
So, we, you probably know, we had an event at the middle school where we had a vent give, uh, fire sprinkler, give vent, um, and ruined our gym and caused a huge amount of, um, insurance expense. And all the policies were updated at that point. I think within reason, though. I don't think they, you know, it's not like we outlawed tag after that kind of experience, but we don't use baseballs and softballs in the gym anymore as an example, um, or soccer. So we, we use wiffleball things inside. Along those same lines, we were really clear still about the fields being a place where liability insurance needs to be had. And in, in all honesty, the condition of our fields is so poor, we need to have liability insurance, uh, from people that are using the fields because they're in poor condition. So we have to work really hard to maintain them and get them healthy enough each year with a renovated, uh, the field, which we would have to renovate the fields if we do any construction to the building, because they'd be compromised just with equipment. We would significantly improve the condition of the field. I don't think it would take away the liability. We, we have discussed whether or not we would allow groups to assume the liabilities, either individually or collectively, but I don't believe that's where we left our last policy. I think we left it still as a minimum. I think it's like a one million dollar liability policy, which is, I think, kind of standard. And then the, uh, that plays out, we were told, to about three hundred dollars a year for a group of people to have a umbrella policy for liability. So, I know that can be a lot of funds, um, for, you know, a gathering of kids or adults to do different recreational activities. Um, but right now, our policy is pretty clear about needing liability insurance for the fields.
Would there be any possibility of a group coming on not needing a, for a one-time event, let's say? They don't need a policy for a whole year, would there be any possibility of perhaps working with your insurance carrier to make available the purchase of a rider or something like that, that a group could come in and, and say, "Well, we"
Get like a one-time, yeah.
"Are happy to, to, uh, deal with the liability insurance, can you provide us with a," you know, and, and the cost could be cut down from that annual number?
I think that's a really good question. I think it's along the same lines of what's the red tape that we need to incur to make it as public as possible. Um, I guess another question we had coming to tonight was, what do you think the best way for us to get information to people? You guys are welcome to chime into this at public comment time as well, but I think some of the feedback we had was, one, that the information was, um, not coming kind of consistently and clearly enough. Uh, and so, you know, we held public forums and we toured the building and we had articles in the paper, but some of the feedback we had was it wasn't enough, and I'm just curious about your input into how else to reach the voters.
Did you guys, I mean, we, we were here quite a bit, and so, well, some of you on the select board are very knowledgeable about where this project came from and where it was at, and, and then it didn't pass the bond. So you know where we did, we're sort of looking for where we went wrong last time and what we could do better this time.
Right.
So, that kind of effort will lump into the ominous sounding marketing, you know, strategy. And I think the mistake you made, quite frankly, was that, it, it is very difficult for a client, somebody like you, to say, "Well, we know all this and we think that we've given this out to lots of people." But A, I would, right off the bat, I would challenge that you were here a lot. I think you were here twice, which is a, a good amount. But I think what you have learned, you know, just by hearing, calling it a listening tour and everything, is to get out and get out and get out. And it's, and it's a huge amount of work, but someone reminded me just last night that the high school took fifteen years. Now, there was lots of other things happening there, and, you know, they were looking for land and this and that and the other thing. But by the time it coalesced, everyone had been, had been listened to, actively listened to. You know, like, shake them and say, "Tell me what you think," type of thing. Uh, and, and I think that, uh, and, 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 you know, I know all the people, 'cause that, you, that effort was right on, right after I, I came back to the select board from the school board, and they're all very good, nice, talented people, but they just forgot how to, um, to take their time and not have it be rushed and to, um, uh, and do, appear open for-
Feedback.
For feedback, yeah. And as opposed to, "This is what we're thinking," it's like, you know, they, they jumped right to that part of it, of the, of the decision.
That's how it felt. It felt like the, the end.
That's what it felt like to the people, and, and then, and then the whole, you know, body of our citizenry has changed in the last five and ten years. And so, that, you have to redouble your effort to get out. So I applaud this, and I applaud what I thought I heard was twenty-five or so listening, listening tours.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, to go out and to also, one of the things that this board did a number of years ago, um, was to get out in, to, uh, you know, for, for Rockport, our five villages, into community spaces that weren't ordinarily, uh, thought of as, you know, "This is a very official room, every, sorry, everybody."
Destroying the electronic.
Everybody, uh, knows what they come here for. They come here for long and boring meetings, yep. Um, but-
Then you're dragging it out.
But when, when, when you go to, you know, when you have something at, you know, the Camden Library, you have something at Simonton Corner, you have something like that, the, that's where you can get a disappointingly low turnout, twelve people. But those twelve people go and talk to another twelve people, who talk to another twelve people, and that's really the important part.
So I guess not to, okay, I'm sorry.
I think the, the feedback portion is, is important, because, you know, I recall the, the large meeting we had over in the, in the library at the middle school when the project was presented, and there were a lot of concerns raised that evening by select board members and planning board members and things like that. But it didn't change at all the plan that you had. You moved forward with that plan. So I'm glad to see you're looking for feedback now, because I think that's gonna help you craft a better plan that would have a better chance of passing when it comes to that.
And not to keep your meeting going too much longer, but I guess in closing, uh, one final question would be, um, as you have talked to residents, are there final bits of information that you've heard? Like feedback that maybe wasn't addressed strongly enough in revisions or changes to the plan that you think we need to consider as we move forward?
The one big item that I had heard was, when they went to the vote, that it seemed like it was deliberately set to cut people out, holding it in the middle of February for a special election for one item on the agenda. It was, it might, you know, and I got a couple of neighbors that it's all for the children, but they still, they said, "They're not gonna vote no, because they're rushing this into February."
Yeah, it's so interesting, because you can look at it from two sides, I mean, the, the votes-
I know there was the timing issue.
And it was also because they wanted the focus to be on that one issue, so that everybody would be clear. I mean, we've had, this, we went last week with the, this big building committee, and there was thought of, "Why are you waiting till two thousand seventeen? Why don't you do, do two thousand sixteen? It's a, it's an election. In November, there'll be a lot of people." And you can think that way. We, the biggest thing, that we didn't wanna rush to a new decision, we wanted to make sure that we had all the feedback, everybody on board, everybody knowledgeable. But, um, the February vote was so that it would be clean and clear, and this is what we're talking about, and it was very well attended comparatively. It had more people showing up than, than some of the June votes and some of the fall votes. So, you know, it's funny how things are interpreted. The, the interpretation was a negative one on some, on some levels. When, when we were trying to do a positive thing by saying, "This is all you have to think about, no other ordinances or other issues." And so, I think that's, again, a marketing thing, that we have to make sure that people are clear that we're trying to create something for the communities, and we want the community's feedback and to be on board with it. We're not at all trying to come up with something that's our idea, that we're trying to ram down somebody's throat. This is definitely what we all have to get on board with, because something has to be done. The middle school is in a situation where it can't continue as is, and money has to be spent. We just wanna spend it in a way that works for everyone, you know, as well, as well as, you know, you can in a community.
As our town manager has been known to say, "People look more for a reason to vote no than to vote yes."
And I never really realized that until this.
They're, they're willing to say, "But," you know, "If you come along and," well, you know, just a little bit of a nudge can send them over to the no side.
Here's, here's my two cents if I was, sorry, Ken, did you wanna?
The only thing I was gonna say is that I think a stumbling block the last time, quite honestly, was the bottom line. The number was too high. And I think that, uh, you need- The number was too high. Um and I think that you need to be very, very cognizant as, as you move forward. And I think if you can show the voters that, you know what, we understand we made a mistake last time and we can look forward and we can find economies and we can do things a little differently and we can come in at a lower number, whatever that number is. I think that's gonna help you quite a bit.
Yeah, one of the pieces to that is, is the removal of the MET building piece of the project. Because while we were really proposing a middle school project, there were all of these, we were addressing so many more things. The Mary E. Taylor Building, the business, doing, which actually is part of the CSD and not the MSAD, which is the Bus Barn. So, and that was a million dollars in itself. So, it really, just removing those pieces, um separating the project out so we could address it uh more pointedly, I think, is also part of the hope. And also looking back at where were the big ticket items within the school to see if there's any room to trim any of that. Is it, is that gonna so negatively affect our programming that we don't want to make that sacrifice? Because if that is the case, we either need to wait or we need a capital campaign for the other things to, to not inhibit our programs, which are so strong. So, it's, I think that's good feedback and it's part of the reason why even just initially, the board voted to remove the MET piece of the project. So, we wouldn't um cloud that and also come out with such a big ticket at the end.
You guys should know too that we've asked the Camden Select Board if they have a, a emotional attachment to the Mary E. Taylor Building, which is that building, if you look at the middle school, it's the building on the far left side. It's the, it's the brick building that looks very classic school building. Um in order to renovate it, it's about three million dollars just to make that up to code. And we were tr- trying to work that in, but now we're thinking maybe we need to relook at that and think, well, let's not include that. Maybe that's not a good use of money to renovate that building. We've asked this Camden Select Board if they want to have that building or keep it or maintain it for, for some reason. So, they haven't given us real feedback yet, but that's out there. I don't know what you all think about it. I mean, you Rockport people, but it is a building that's, may have some resonance with some of you.
Well, it's the only architecturally interesting building on the whole campus, that's for sure.
We would agree.
It uh, it also is probably the building that is the most difficult to renovate from what I understand as far as energy efficiency and things like that. So, it would, it would cost an awful lot, the way I understand it, an awful lot more money per square foot.
It wouldn't have a heating system once we started, so.
Yeah, so it's.
Did you wanna ask another question?
Well, I just wanted to share, you were saying feedback and we all go around and talk to a lot of people. And, and one of the things, you know, when people had asked my opinion of the middle school, I would say I went into it with an open mind. You all did. If you're going to the meetings, if you go out of your way to go to the meetings like I did, I walked away thoroughly convinced that you all need a new middle school. You did a great job doing that. But exactly what Ken said, that bottom line number was far too high for me. So, if, if you can get people to come to the meetings, you paint a really good picture about why this school needs improvement and where the deficiencies are. And it's really clear. You can walk us through it. It's great. But at the end of the day, that, that number has to just be smaller.
Of course, we're gonna be going on two years later, which money, borrowing money is gonna be more expensive, so.
Interest rates are up, construction costs will be up. You're gonna do weird, different timeline things now. There's a lot of news.
They'll hold us to that. Yeah.
Do we have anyone in the audience that like my public comment at this time? You know, we say, you know, we welcome it, you know?
Okay. So, in closing, we're still looking for a Rockport member for that committee. I'm hopeful one of you might take that on. Our next meeting.
Did I miss the last one? I said that I was gonna go just to go. I volunteered for that.
Yeah, we, well, we, we both, we both missed it because that was a crazy time for us.
I wanted to get to it too and I felt bad that I missed it.
I, I wanna try, yeah, I, I don't wanna try. I'm, I, I may be throwing some, a damp towel over this. Remember, there's a potential for a conflict of interest here in that whatever the school board recommends, if it passes, we're the ones that have to raise the money for it. So, you know, there could be the implication that there may be some, you know, double dealing or something like that.
Are the select board liaisons voting members of your committee or can they simply be liaison and inputters of information?
That's a good question. I don't know that we defined that role.
That could.
I would feel a lot more comfortable.
It's just remember, a member of a select board cannot serve on the school committee, just like we can't serve on the county commissioners. Because we're the ones that have to raise whatever money that they come and tell us that they want. And we don't have any input to say as a select board, that, that's way too much.
When are we gonna talk about it?
Well, we, I mean, that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing really to talk about. If they, if any of us wanted to be a liaison, I think that would be a useful thing. But to be, to be a voting member, I agree.
Let me just clarify, there's, this is a committee. So, to my knowledge, there's no voting. This is a, this is the, the purpose, the charge of the building committee is to uh go through the process together and try to reconstruct the best possible proposed plan to bring to the school board. The school board then will vote whether to bring that to the towns and put it on the ballot. So, yeah, to my, to my understanding, we've had one meeting. It's not a voting committee. It's really an attempt to get some agreement, alignment and potential consensus, but there's a lot of disparities and there are Camden members on that board. And we would definitely like Rockport represented. Um and I can tell you the way to do that is to email Maria Libby. And the next meeting's April thirteenth at four P M. So, if there are a couple of you that would be interested, if you could reach out to her. It takes place at the superintendent's office at the Bus Barn.
Bus Barn.
At Lions Lane.
I think that there's a tour of the school building at three, if you're interested in walking through the building again with um
Our facilities director, Keith.
Keith, yeah. Keith is gonna do another tour if you wanna see it.
That actually would be a lovely thing to send out a, a invitation.
Yeah.
Because I have to be honest, I have so many meetings on my list right now. I don't know my own name, spending a whole week in this room. Um but that would be a, a useful thing to invite us to. I know you guys did it before and I was unable to make it before.
So, I probably will just have Maria reach out to you as a collective board and let you know how many members she's hoping to collect. And maybe you can discuss who might be able to participate in that.
And I hope in the meantime that this board comes to conclusion that there's no more of a possibility of, 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 you know, conflict of interest than there is with you guys sitting on the main solid, you know, the solid waste board. And it's, I mean, it's kind of, that one surprised me.
Well, that was required by the inter-local agreement.
No, no, I mean, your, your comments surprised me. Your, your comments surprised me because it's, it facilitates communication. That's all it's doing.
And that's the purpose of it really, is the input and the pipeline.
That's where we all think that they fell down. Why would we exacerbate that? So, but know that, you know, there are several of us who would love to do it. We are just stressed up to about, about here, so.
Okay.
You may not want me because I ask a lot of questions.
That's okay.
We like curiosity.
I'm good with questions. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sorry to keep everyone.
Uh the next item, we have our annual report from the Conservation Commission. And Ted is here tonight to just bring us up briefly, bring us up to date on what the Conservation Commission is uh doing and moving forward to what you're gonna be planning on doing this coming year.
Okay, we can do that. Uh my name is Ted Skoronsky. I'm the chairperson for the Conservation Commission. Currently, we have uh the following members, uh myself, obviously, Lynn Banister, who just resigned, Bob Kennedy, Kim Kimball and George Hazelton. And they're right from the downtown Rock, the center of Rockport. And then we have Fred Rybeck and Bruce Cap from West Rockport. So, we had, we have a pretty diverse group. Uh we meet each month at four thirty on the second Thursday of the month. And meetings are usually one and one and a half hours. Obviously, we need to do, there's a number of projects that we are supposed to be doing uh by by, you know, what, what the town says we should be doing. We just don't have enough of members. We don't have enough of people. We need, we need some, no, additional members. And obviously, now we have two openings. And if we can get three alternates, that would be great, and associates. And we do have a number of associates. And that helps because one of the biggest projects we have, and it's, it's been going on now, water quality. That project has been going on for approximately twelve years. And for the last seven years, we've been concentrating on the harbor itself. Uh Bob Kennedy is the head of, it's a subcomis- committee, committee, a part of the Conservation Commission. And um one of the things that the Conservation and some of the associates have been doing is testing the water quality in the harbor by uh Goose River, the water, Winter Street uh stream, Ot and Harbor streams and other streams, which all uh feed the water flow into the harbor. One of the things that, we have several things going on. There was a grant finally given that we, we have to start looking at the uh watershed activity and, and that, you mentioned that earlier. And Bob is uh working hard on that. Uh we normally get trained each year by the D E P to do proper water, water monitoring. It's, it, like I said, this, this happens to be probably the biggest project that we have. And almost everybody on the uh commission all uh take part in it. And also our representative from the select board, he has uh gotten his hands wet too.
On my feet yet.
So, I mean, that's an area that we, we really have concern about because several years ago, the uh federal D E P came in and uh they said that the town, you know, we, we don't, we did not meet the Clean Water Act. Uh and so, we've been working, trying to find the point source. And that's what, right now, there is that uh watershed activity. And uh the D E P is lending us uh temperature monitoring uh station, you know, i- items that will be installed. And uh all of this will be feeding into what we need. And, and people have to realize uh everything that goes, you know, flows down, all goes into the harbor. So, it affects us, affects everybody, swimming, fishing or anything else. Uh part of that, to make sure that we don't have other problems, we have increased the number of dog waste stations. And uh we're fortunate, the Department of Public Works have been, you know, they, they, they've been, they've been the ones having to clean up the, you know, picking up the bags and things like that. But they've been really good about it and uh they've signed on that we could have the additional stations and, and I, you know, that should help improve uh some of the dog waste that's been around. Um a, a, a simple thing that we did was in West Rockport, put up some signage because um people were just dumping stuff all around, especially like by Molly. Uh there's a spring that a lot of people use and go get water. And they were just dumping tires and other junk. So, we had put up a number of signs and it's helped. And a good part about it, there are no bullet holes in any of them yet. So, that was, that, that's a success, I think, that we don't have bullet holes. Uh one of the thing we, one of the things that we do each year is uh do a Conservation Eastman wa- uh surveys. And we do this, we have two properties that are on the Conservation Eastman. There's the Pettit Property, or I think it's the Hall Property now, but, and the Y M C A. And what this includes means that the commission uh has to go out there and actually walk the property. And that would be trying to find where the, where the property lines are, making sure that there is nothing else being put on the property that wasn't there originally, like the Pettit Property. They have five little sheds and we have to make sure there aren't any more of that being put up. And, and that the abudders of that property are not abusing it by, you know, doing other problems. The Y M C A, it's the same thing. We, you know, we have the map and we go around and make sure that the uh the metal rods are still in the ground that says what, what the property line is. For the future, one of the things that we've, that we are trying to do is do more education for the uh for the, well, for the community, whether it's Rockport residents or Camden or anything else. Uh we'd like to make sure that, you know, trying to give information out there. So, what we are doing is uh next month, on April, Thursday, April twenty-eighth, we are gonna be doing what we call a pesticide forum. And we've titled it, "The Natural Practices for Lawns and Gardens." We will have two speakers. Uh it will be at the, here at the Opera House from five thirty to seven. Uh we have a keynote speaker is, which is Gary Fish from the Maine Department of D E P. And he will talk about uh hardscape, landscaping. Uh and what's the best practices and uh what the problems are with pesticides. And we're not addressing the agricultural area because most of the properties around here are uh owned by individuals or, or, or condominiums. And we have to realize that if they're dumping pesticides and it's, and it's not used properly, that it is going down to the harbor. So, we're, we're not free huggers. We're water huggers.
I've never heard that one before.
Well, we, we, we have to keep.
Patent pending.
Yes. Uh the other person we have is uh okay, yeah.
So, I, I think you've pretty well summed up what you're planning on doing, have been doing and are planning on doing. Do we?
Right.
Anyone have any questions with Ted to, you know?
Yeah, Ted, I, I wasn't sure. I missed something about why you, why the scrutiny on the Pettit Property and the Y M C A. I, I missed that.
Why? Because it's a Conservation Eastman.
It's a legal requirement.
Yeah. And it has to be, we actually have to file papers with the state every year.
Right.
Telling them that this is good. And, and we did this uh in December. Uh second week of December, we did it. And we, the papers have been filed with the state. And we have to make, no.
Got it.
And that has to be done every year?
That has to be done every year.
Did you see the time on the, the schedule?
Oh, yeah, you said.
Says seven P M, but he said five thirty to seven.
Five thirty to seven. Five thirty in the afternoon to seven P M at the Rock, uh the Opera House, April twenty-eighth.
And, and we will be streaming that.
Yes, yes, we, yeah, that's.
That was important in the discussion actually too, because then it'll be an archived copy. So, those who perhaps can't attend would be able to then access the information.
Right. So, the two speakers we have, one is, like I said, telling the, all the information about what pesticides are and what the problems could be. The second one being someone who's a practical user that uses natural and organic materials. So, it is a valuable education. And uh we'd like to have as many people as we can. So, I guess that's uh basically where we're at. So, uh I have to ask for it again. We could use members. We really do.
I will chime in there and say that the, the group that's there right now is, is a hardworking group. Sorry to lose Lynn uh because she was uh so instrumental in what was going on. But uh we have Kim Kimball, who's a newer member and has jumped right in with both feet. I think she's gonna be excellent. But as Ted mentioned, anybody out there who has an interest in conservation practices in Rockport, uh contact any of us on the select board or talk to Ted. Um and we have some vacancies on the commission, but we also have the ability to have alternate members who can come and participate in the meetings as well. So, thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Appreciate your efforts on this and the whole committee. Uh the next item that we have is to uh discuss the request by Richard Nightengale to change the road acceptance ordinance. the road acceptance ordinance. This was brought to us last month as part of the public comment, and at the request of a couple of members of the board, we moved it, we decided we would place it on our agenda tonight to discuss how we wanted to proceed with that. So, I see Mr. Gibbons is here again, we do have a picture on the screen.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A. As I was thinking through this, we've got five or six different options on how we can proceed. One, we can just say, forget it, we don't want to do it, other, we could pass it to the ORC, there was a letter provided by one of the members of the ORC saying that they could take it on.
Do you want to outline this after he makes his presentation? It seems a little weird to outline.
Well, I thought we already had the presentation, that was given to us last month.
Oh.
As to the reason why.
Oh, okay, sorry, I mean, he had a brief, briefing, but, okay.
Is, well, what is the desire by the board, do you want to hear the request again?
I think we heard what we needed to hear last month, and I can say for myself that I looked into it, and being the liaison to the ORC, had some conversations with the members of the ORC, and I know that Mr. Duke, who's a resident out there, when I was first elected to the select board, a long time ago now, it seems, came to me with this issue, and I think since then, there have been more homes built on Hawthorne, and my thought is that it makes sense to move in a direction that would allow this road to be accepted. The 50% rule that's there is there for a reason, a couple of reasons, actually, one of the reasons being that when a new road is built, if it's not completely built out, then that road during the continuation of the build out is going to see a lot of heavy equipment traffic, and if the town accepts that road, it may require expense to perhaps reconstruct it sooner than otherwise, and the other is that if there aren't a lot of homes on the road, then the property tax revenue is not as high as it might be for another road. But, in this case, this particular road runs between two accepted roads, and so, some of the testimony we heard last month talked about school bus access and emergency vehicle access, and so, for those reasons, it seemed to me to make sense to try to move in a direction that would allow the exception of this road, and also to address future situations. So, I crafted, and you have it in your packet, the exception to the 50% rule for the road ordinance, which basically says that if the road extends between two accepted roads, and we have our public works director, our fire chief, and our police chief go out and say, yes, it's in the town's interest to accept this road, then we can reduce that 50% threshold to 25%, and I think in this case, that would allow acceptance of the road in question.
I'm not sure about the 25%, that's all, and the only reason I'm not is how you calculate that, if you can look at either the whole subdivision, the fourth amendment to the subdivision, or you look at just the road. I think it, at 20%, I think it works, I'm not sure at 25%, depending on how you look at the road.
And I'm, I can wiggle a little bit on the percentage there, but the idea is, I think we still need a threshold, and I'm talking to the board here now, and I don't want to see a situation where a road is built, and there are no homes on it, and then, and we have something written in there that just allows that road to be accepted, I don't think that's in the town's best interest. So, I'm willing to say, let's lower the threshold to a reasonable level, providing we have this connection between roads. A dead end road with no, that's a different story, where nobody is going to use the road except the residents, but in this case, you have a situation where through traffic would be possible, and things of that nature.
Okay. Before we continue, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience here tonight that would like to make public comment at this time, I think we should take the public comment at this time as opposed to wait until later. Sir, would you step on up here, tell us who you are and where you reside?
My name is Shane Gray, I reside on the furthest west residence on this Hawthorne, this Cliffside Drive. My big concern is, I have a little five-year-old who's going to be attending the Rockport Camden School starting next year, and the bus access is my primary concern. Otherwise, she'd have to almost traverse a three-quarter mile stretch to get on the bus, and I'm worried about her safety and those cold temperatures in that distance, so, that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Just very quickly, thank you for, sorry.
People at home don't know you, necessarily.
The aforementioned Mr. Duke, the younger, John Duke, Hawthorne Drive, thank you for having a chance to talk about this tonight, I really appreciate that. This has been a very, it's a challenge, I think, for a town to deal with this issue, it's not strictly a select board issue, it's not strictly a land use issue, it's not strictly a budget issue, there's a lot of moving pieces and parts in this, it's not exclusively a town issue, it's a school issue, and so, I appreciate some of the attention that Ken's given, has given to that issue that we've been facing, you know, in the four years that I've been there, it's something that, obviously, we made, there was a prior attempt here to have this road looked at, and I guess the only thing I would just add to maybe what was said in the past, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend last time, for those, all those meetings that Tracy's mentioned about, I also have those in another community. We, I think, speaking is, I think that the school bus issue is predominant, there's about, in just the Winding Way, Chickawaki Pond Road, and Hawthorne Drive, we have nearly 30 school-aged kids that are in that area, and this is a huge center of young families who are actually usually using that school bus. We hear all the time about school buses riding empty, these kids are getting on the bus every day, they're using this school bus route, and it's vital for these young families to be able to get to work on time, and have their kids go to school and do the things they're supposed to do, so, the ability to make this move in a way in which eventually this could be considered by the voters, not, this isn't even at that point, again, this is just an attempt to try to get to the point where the voters may consider the road itself. I think it sends a very powerful message, and I think it's, it'd be important for the board, and for the town of Rockport, I think, to stand behind that sort of thing, and stand behind, you know, the young families that are trying to grow and make this town a vibrant place. It's, as you know, you've looked at all the economics of where we are as a community, and the average age is growing and growing and growing, and rising all the time, and the amount of times we can try to make all the town benefit, no matter who you are, whether you're a five-year-old getting on the school bus for the first time, or, you know, someone who's retired here, I think this sends a very powerful message that the town of Rockport's a place that embraces all of those people, and so, I appreciate your attention in this matter, I hope you consider it strongly, and thank you.
John, actually, if you could stay with there for a second, could you remind me, the reason the buses won't go on is that it's a private way, or that it's not up to snuff?
That's exactly right, it's a private way, there was a previous attempt.
I can tell you why. When you go on a school bus, the problem is, if it's a private way, you don't know how well it's maintained, or whether it's been plowed, and that's a problem. If on a school, what's on a public road, you know that it's going to be okay, so imagine if you took a bus, a bunch of kids, and you run on a private way, and you went off the road because it was disrepair, or because it wasn't plowed right, then there'd be a real problem with the liability.
So, are they, even in good weather with no snow hazards, they are still not allowed to drive down that road even if it's 70 degrees and sunny?
Well, it's a policy on the part of the school board, but it's a liability issue.
Right.
It's a liability, the state of Maine and all towns have, the tort claims act to protect them, so there's a limit on liability in case you are liable, there's no, there's no tort claims limitations on private roads, that exists all the time, so it's a very complicated life, I could be here 20 minutes talking about all of the problems, but normally, for towns, we have limitations on liabilities because we're a town based upon the Maine Tort Claims Act. If you're a private road, you have no limitation of liability, it's $400,000 limitation now if you get sued, but if I get hurt on a private road, I can sue for millions and millions of dollars, that's one big difference.
And just very briefly, the condition, the road itself, I'm not sure how many of you have had a chance to travel over the road, the road is in as good a shape as any road, public, private, or anything in between, when, in a prior attempt to have the road considered by the board, and then potentially the voters, public works director of the town at that time inspected the road, it was paved at that time, so that the code of pavement that's currently on the road is no more than two or three years old at this time, it's in great shape.
You're down by the big cliff, right? I came, and your eyes lit up when I said about fiber, and I was half expecting you to be here for the technology committee.
Let's, let's stay back on our topic here.
I want to point, I didn't make before, going along with your theme, because this is a road where the public uses it a lot because it's an access to two different roads, then it puts a lot of, also a lot of demand on this way, which my client has to upkeep, that's, that's kind of unfair, too, so that's another reason why I would support what you're doing.
And the way I wrote my shot at this was, if the private road, or portion of the private road, so I'm in saying, let's look at the part of the road that connects two roads and not the whole subdivision, because that's what we, that's what we really, we really want to access, is that connection between two roads, in my, my.
So, you would not be including the loop that goes down to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, because I don't know where Hawthorne stops, I had thought that Hawthorne.
It goes all the way to that cul-de-sac.
I thought that, that was Cliffside. That's what I thought, yeah, that's, actually Terrace comes over, goes over to a cul-de-sac up there, and then it's Hawthorne down, and then from that intersection up, it's Cliffside, is that right?
From right here.
Oh, just.
It starts right here.
Okay. Okay, because I would, I think, because that doesn't connect to anything up there, there's not a second connection.
Down here, though, this is.
Right.
Ashley Terrace from the other side.
Right, and I believe Ashley Terrace is.
It is.
It's already accepted.
So, we'd be looking at, in my estimation, we'd be looking at from that junction there down to where it hits Winding Way.
I believe.
And up to the cul-de-sac.
From this point here.
Yeah.
Down, this down here, remember that is a public road.
Right, but the part of Ashley Drive, before the Ashley Drive cul-de-sac, which is off the top of that chart, that is a town road, so that's your connection right there, it's from that point of Ashley down to Winding Way, and that would be the portion of road that I crafted this to address.
From here down here like this.
Right, and so, your child, then, instead of having to walk all the way to Winding Way, would probably have to go to that intersection between what shows as Hawthorne, Hawthorne and Hawthorne.
Which is four properties.
Yeah, so it's a much shorter walk.
I have a question.
Yes.
Ken, about your wording, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I would have actually probably appreciated a presentation before to brush up, so, wasn't there some bit about, like, a grandfather clause of sorts pre-existing, and I just didn't know if that needed to be addressed in your language, because this is unique, not necessarily for percentages of occupancy or development, but.
The original proposal by Mr. Gibbons was to just put a date in there that subdivisions established after a certain date would not.
Before the enactment of the ordinance.
Before the enactment of the policy.
But, but I opted to go in a different way for two reasons, number one, I think this will meet the bill, but number two, it'll also address any future situations that are similar to this in nature, so I don't, if we adopt this, and if we adjust the percentage so that it works.
The question really is, is it unfair, I still think it is, to apply the.
No, there's some, we could have some disagreement.
But anyway, I'm trying to cooperate with you and move in your direction, I'm just telling you, my original position was that, and still is, that retroactively applying the ordinance is unfair, but I like the idea of compromise, and I'm, you know, I think we can move along and get this thing resolved. I don't find any fault with your logic about future, future.
Well, I'm going to be quiet on the voice of the board.
Ken, well, no, because I mean, you seem more intimate with this than I am, so say there's a new this happening, I'm just curious how this is going to, maybe, I don't know, maybe I should just stop speaking.
You could build a road that connected.
Right now, brandy new.
Brand new, that connected two roads, and build next to nothing on it, and then say, we want you to take it.
Well, we want you to apply to the voters to take it.
Yeah, it goes to the voters, none of the.
And I understand that.
But their threshold to get to the voters.
For me personally, the whole point of all of these rules that we put into place was for us to not take roads until they were built out, so that we were not taking on the expense of keeping up, doing the upkeep on that road, so it's beautiful today, and that's wonderful, but if it's only 20% or less built out, that 80% and all of the equipment that would run over that road, if that's the reason why we put that in place in the first place, which I believe we did, then we're just throwing that out with the bathwater, just kind of going, well, we, you know, we think this might be important enough, and I don't know if I'm convinced that it's, it's important enough for us to take it to the voters, for them to have to make that decision, when it's kind of a policy decision on how long, when, at what point is it appropriate for us to take on maintenance of roads, because we don't just take on snow, we take on rebuilding and all of those tons of asphalt that we had a long conversation about last week already.
And maintaining the ditches and culverts.
Right, so we're talking about taking on roads that don't meet a minimum standard that we put together nine years ago, and that seems to have some very good logic behind why we put that into place, so, I'm not sold on this being a great thing for us to say, we don't know enough, we aren't sure, we're just going to let the voters choose.
Well, there were, there were two reasons, as my research showed, that, one, is that there would be sufficient property tax being generated from the buildings, the homes typically, that would be placed on there, to cover the cost of the maintenance of the road, the second one was that if it doesn't reach a certain standard, and let's say it's only, well, in this case, 25% built out maybe, that all of a sudden, there's three or four houses, and Mr. disrespectful developer comes on in, or builder, and he's, and he puts his, you know, earth-moving equipment down on the road with, it's clanking and clanking and clanking, and, you know, I've seen it out here on the roads now, that just with the little ones, they can do quite a bit of damage, just doing that zero turn and chewing it all up, you know, another reason why you, we just had decided not to, you know, need a required level of build-out.
And, and along with that, you know, if we're going to, we're saying we need the approval of public works, fire chief, and police chief, I would also have to say that if the road is built to any specs at all, they're not going to have an issue with the road, and that's not the point, they're going to use that road, if the fire department needs to get there, they aren't going to have the same issue that the schools would have of, we're not, they're not going to go all the way around because it's a private road, the fire department, the police department's just going to get there, so that really doesn't win us anything to have their approval, because they're going to use that road anyway if there's an emergency, so, and we already had a piece in here that the public works director had certain standards that he had to make sure, he or she, that they were followed, so, this, this new rule that you're proposing is a nice thought, but it doesn't, it doesn't move forward our need to know how much it's going to cost to maintain that road, and at what point it's appropriate for us to take it over.
Yeah. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up first?
Oh, okay. I'm not, if you look at the road acceptance ordinance, it speaks to the structure for the development of the road, that's not, this doesn't change that, in other words, the road has to be built to town specs to be accepted, and all it does is allow for the special situation where a road connects two roads to reduce that threshold to the 25% instead of 50%, I understand the rule, why the thing was adopted in the first place, and I fully, you know, agree with that, that the tax revenue is important, and that heavy equipment driving over the road is important as well, and when, but I think when you're looking at a road where it's a dead end with a cul-de-sac on it, it's a different situation than you're looking at with a road that connects two established roads, and that's what I'm trying to address by saying, let's lower the threshold in that special case.
But it doesn't change anything for our fire chief, or our police chief, or our public works.
Well, I think, the reason I put that in there is that I think it's worthwhile to have those folks look at that road in that situation and say, is it in the best interest of the town to have that road accepted, whether it's, and in case of the public works director I'm talking about, is it easier for him, for example, to say, well, gee, it'd be a lot easier for us to plow if we could go down and go through that road rather than have to stop there, dump the snow, and then back up and turn around, that's why the public works director would be involved, and the police chief and fire chief, I think, it allows us to, if those three people agree to say that this is in the best interest of the town, then we can lower the threshold, they may not agree, and in which case, the 50% threshold is going to take place.
I yield to the presenter.
I, I yield to the presenter. A quick suggestion that might help you go, go back. For this amendment, if you say it applies to subdivisions that have been approved before two thousand and seven, that at least reduces the number of roads it applies to. So for this amendment, because I think it's unfairly unfair anyway, so as you say, for this amendment, this provision fifty percent doesn't apply to subdivisions that were approved prior to the amendment and the following provision applies. And that way there you restrict it.
Okay, so now I'm gonna take up a little bit of time. Response to that is either this is good law or it's not good law.
Which?
To, to Ken's thing.
Okay.
So it doesn't really matter whether it applies to, you know, stuff there. Tracy says, oops, we're doing, we're doing policy, we're making policy here, which we are, which is what the whole, except for, you know, build a road this way or we won't take it, all of this is policy. We, this, the amendment that the presenter is, is talking about was an amendment that was put in at a time when the then-standing Select Board and the ORC really didn't want us to ever take on another road ever again in our entire life. So from that lens, that's what this is. I don't necessarily disagree with the amendment, but we now have a different way of thinking. And actually Ken's idea of supporting by policy by this more generous approach to things actually supports the change in thinking of, do we want a bunch of cul-de-sacs, really ugly? Or do we want to have a network of walkable, slow, you know, traffic calming, shorter streets that connect to each other? So this actually, in a very interesting way, since we could conceivably present to the voters only half of Hawthorne, it actually supports current use of land. And thirdly, I want to say that the first time we heard this, it was in public comment, there was no, you know, there was no real hearing per se. And I want to just make sure that the presenter has presented to us all that he wants to, because we, we strangely cut him off.
I, I just want to say just for the record then, there was, my client subdivision, this stage, was approved in two thousand and four. And in two, so, when you, most people don't know this, but when you start a subdivision as a developer, you have a choice. Either make the roads public or make them private. If you now make the foolish decision to make them public, you, the owner, has to maintain that road until the town accepts it forever. So, in most states, and I'm proposing legislation to stay in the state of Maine, that when you apply for a subdivision, I'm proposing this, when you apply for a subdivision, residential subdivision, if you want it to be public, you have to ask the voters if they'll accept it, if it's built to standards, before you even build, get it approved. That way there you know, as a developer, should you make it public or private. Here, the problem was, the most expensive part of a subdivision is this road. In two thousand and four, my client determined the price of his lots based upon, mostly upon the cost of that road. And for four years, and so from two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven, he sold lots in there. And all of a sudden you change the rules to make it more expensive for him to have that road approved by the town. He cannot recoup that expense from the lots he's already sold. And that's why that law is unfair. We wanted to compromise, but that's why that's unfair.
Owen? I, I feel like we as a board are maybe having two separate conversations, I feel anyway. One is the request for the inappropriateness of kind of retroactivity in a grandfathering of their two thousand and four, superseding our two thousand and seven new ordinance. And another is this broader conversation about connecting of public roads and percentages of development on them. And I'm just confused about, it seems like we could do a relatively quick fix. I'm kind of in agreeance that it's silly that they built something with one understanding, checked, good to go. And then a couple of years later, we pass a new ordinance and then it's doing ill to them. So though I, I think that it's great to have the broader conversation, especially given the context of how this municipal road acceptance ordinance was crafted and, and what their intent may or may not have been, so that's great and I'm happy to have that conversation. I just, am I on track with, can we, can we narrow it down to specifically this request versus a much broader? Because I feel like we're really relaxing.
As I laid out, we've got a number of choices. One is just to say, we're gonna throw that ordinance out, the, the other end in saying, we're gonna throw this request out. And, and we can do anything in between, but whatever we do has got to go to the voters for approval.
Because, you know, especially considering all the heavy equipment traffic that's on it, I don't necessarily disagree with the fifty percent development. I could be convinced otherwise, but I just feel like that conversation is much bigger and broader than what he's here for and him.
He is here for an exception to the policy that was enacted through a vote of the residents of the Town of Rockport about four years after their subdivision was approved. Now, typically, a developer is gonna go out there, gonna build or request the subdivision with the intent of being able to sell all the properties to be developed. In this case, he sold most of the properties and they haven't been developed, because people are looking at them for investments. Maybe they'll develop them in ten, fifteen years, but he's still got the requirement to maintain that road for the residents that are currently living on there.
Right, and, and just to, to what you said about, you know, two thousand and four to two thousand and seven, that was nine years ago. And for me personally, if he would have come before us two or three years after that and said, you changed, you changed what was going on, I think I'd have a very different point of view of it than nine years later, saying, wow, this is impacting me, because he's been paying for that road all along.
Do you have anything good to say on that?
Yes, I do, because he did go back to them three years ago. He went and talked to the town about it. And what he did do, as a result of talking to the town, is that he built, in two thousand and eight, he built that road. Built it to town specs, thinking it was gonna work. So not only did he, did he follow, the, the, when they changed the rule in two thousand and seven, apparently the staff of the town didn't know about that. And he went to the town and said, I'm ready for this, and they said, okay, build it to town specs and we'll go look at it. So he spent about sixty thousand dollars believing it was gonna be accepted in two thousand and eight.
Well, as I think it was Oliver Wendell Holmes Jr., Supreme Court Justice, said, ignorance of the law is no excuse.
He did, and.
Two thousand and eight, he knew what the law was.
No, the town didn't.
But even if he didn't, my, my contention for that is, that was still eight years ago.
Yeah.
So it's a timeliness thing for me personally.
Okay.
Is that when you come to us and say, you changed things for us, you need to help us out, it's a lot more, it has a lot more impact if that change was recent. And I don't, at this point, consider six to eight years, six to nine years recent.
Doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't.
We're.
The statue of retroactivity doesn't make.
We're, we're wandering around here, let's. You said you have a motion?
I do, I'd like to make a motion. I, I move that we pass this matter on to the ORC with the request that they deal with it currently, not, not for next year, utilizing Ken's language as a starting place and to, that we, as the Select Board who gives the ORC, this is a paragraph, this is a parenthetical one. You know, we give direction to the ORC, I make a motion that we give this direction to the ORC to be dealt with reasonably soon, pass it immediately, the second one.
The second one is kind of where you're going?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
With the, evaluate the changes as request and, and the request, this, the request would include Ken's wording. Which I think actually very brilliantly does some, some good things, so that's my motion.
I'll second the motion, at least for discussion.
Okay.
Coherent?
You only question us on the timing, I don't, I don't know that there will be time for the ORC to get this ready for a June vote. Just because of the timing of warrant articles and things like that. I'm happy to have the ORC look at it. I think I've, as I say, I'm the liaison of the ORC, so I have had some discussions with some of the members about this and they are favorably inclined to, to move in this direction. I think the, the details and the wording may be changed a little bit here and there, but, but I think it's unrealistic to think that we would have it ready in time for the warrant articles for June vote.
Let's try a, a reasonable nudge and see what happens, because there, there are some, you know, some very valid.
I mean, if they can, then that's, I think that's fine.
What, what do we expect to come out of the ORC as compared to what you've already written? What kind of feedback or information will we learn?
One of the things we may have to check carefully is what the actual percentage of lots that are developed on that road is.
As far, part of giving that to them says, you can change that number to whatever it takes to pass this.
Unless, well.
That, this is a very specific situation we're talking about. So if we're asking the ORC to go in there and say, we want you to do the math and tell us exactly what it takes to pass this, I am strongly against that. That number, whatever that number is, needs to be something that we feel as a board, is the policy of this board, not how can we make this happen?
Okay, so my motion does not mandate that they pass this. My motion says that we take this to the ORC for their normal evaluation. What I'm a little concerned about, among other things, and I think you might be as well, is that, you know, we don't normally do this, which means a couple of things. We don't have the institutional knowledge that the ORC does, we don't have the language that they do. And, I mean, we've seen what happens with bad citizen, you know, badly worded citizen initiatives. We could screw it up just as easily. But this becomes a response to the next person that says, I want you to do something in a hurry. We say, all right, we think you have enough of the case that we're going to, you know, smack it down the line to the appropriate body and the appropriate body is the ORC. So there's nothing in my motion that, that urges the ORC to pass this. What it does urge the ORC is to add it to their list with a sense of urgency to see if they can, you know, hash it out within the ORC and then write something that would go to the voters.
The timing here is critical, because the public hearing for the land use ordinance changes by the planning committee has to be to the publishers, and I want to say it's Thursday morning, I forget exactly.
We're getting close.
We're getting close, and it might be tomorrow morning, I can't.
Right.
Well, that's why I said.
I still have an issue with this being an emergency of sorts.
Well, and it may be.
It's a nine-year-old situation that, that, that's come before us. I don't have a problem with sending it to the ORC, I do have a problem sending it with the ORC saying, find a way to make this work by lowering that number. I do, I'm just being honest, because I, I already personally think a twenty-five percent is, is just, is like, we don't even, we don't even need to bother to do anything. We should just get rid of the original ordinance entirely. But that's my opinion, other people obviously disagree, but I just don't see an emergency going on for something that's nine years old.
He wants to speak.
In this particular iteration, we manufactured part of this sense of urgency because it wasn't put on the agenda so that we could have this sort of thing. It, it came to us first under public comment, because we didn't put it on the agenda when requested. So, eh, eh, you know, part of this is us, we could have had four more weeks to have the ORC deal with this if we had put it on the agenda.
And still, nine years, four weeks versus nine years, I just, I don't know how busy the ORC is, I just think it's a timeliness factor. That's me.
My last two cents and it'll be very quick, I just, I, I do agree with Tracy. I'm, I'm not overly keen with, with, and I know that's not what's gonna happen, but I, I'm perf, I would be far more comfortable with something resembling a special exemption. What I'm not necessarily comfortable with is a special exemption becoming the new rule that then everyone else can follow.
One of the options that we have before us, that we could, is, okay, we hear what you're saying, there is a process to go through to change our land use ordinances. It, and it was acknowledged in the information that you provided to us last month. You come to us when we're setting up the docket in August or September, it is, you know, put together and then the Select Board approves it for the ORC to work on it in the beginning of the year to bring back to us so that we can put her on the warrant for the June vote, because that's the typical municipal election vote where we change these ordinances.
They could do a special exemption?
Absolutely, you could.
Might totally.
You know how you do that, is you, you adopt his language of, of anything accepted prior, that makes it essentially a special exemption.
And then that's, we could vote on that versus sending it to the voters.
We, we could put an ordinance, or we could put an item on the warrant.
Still have to send it to the voters.
Yes.
Yes, it's still gotta go to the voters. And we could adopt what he's saying, we could just say, okay, we're gonna take what Ken has said, or we can craft other words. But that is within our, our purview. We can do this and put it to the voters, but the voters are still gonna have to say yes or no and we give a, a recommendation and the planning board has to give a recommendation.
In my legit last two cents, I'm pushing the urgency probably because I can a lot empathize with thinking that I'm gonna send my six-year-old out trudging through the snow to catch a school bus. I can barely make it down my driveway with my kid and that goes right to the public road, it's just a long driveway. So when you're talking about spurring economic development so he can sell lots and getting his and his kids to the school bus, yeah, I'm probably a bit of that sense of urgency, so you can blame it on me.
We have a motion on the, on the table here to send it to the ORC with the recommendation to look at Ken's wording and report back to us. The implication on that is they're not gonna report back to us until our next meeting, which puts it beyond the date of being able to get it onto the warrant for the next year, for, I'm sorry, for the June.
But it could go on in November.
It could go on in November.
Then it goes to next June.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Jones? Can I ask one question? May I ask a question?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Why, why do you think it's so unfair to have what I propose, to have an amendment that says this shouldn't apply to subdivisions before two thousand and seven?
Is that me or is that?
I don't like the precedent of, I mean, at first I don't agree with the retroactive law thing, I mean, I could, I can cite other, I mean, we could have made another change that said that the road has to be built to a different specification in two thousand and seven, because that's what all town roads are now built to, and, and this road was built before, it was built to an older specification, that's a burden on the taxpayers. So I, I don't like the precedent of, of, of doing it that way. I guess that's my reasoning, is that, you know, retroactive laws may be difficult to deal with, but they're not illegal, they are acceptable and in some cases they're there for a particular reason. So I'm looking for a different way to solve the problem.
That was nicely put.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got the motion, it's been seconded, we've had discussion, are we ready to move to a vote? Ooh.
So close.
Do you agree with me on the, I, I like all of the language except for that last bit of the twenty-five percent? I would, I would be very comfortable with Ken's language if that very last bit of, or all bits about twenty-five percent are left as question marks. For them to not have our baseline of twenty-five percent, giving them the go low, go low, but with a, hey, what do you think would make sense for this situation? And then let them take it from there, but maybe I'm way off.
Well, I, I think Ken would, would hasten to tell you that the ORC has a very strong personality of their own, so.
I mean, I put it in as a.
So then hack the hell out of that anyway.
Just, just to ease the burden somewhat for this special situation where a road connects to existing municipal roads.
And it's only, they're not necessarily gonna have this conversation unless they watched it and they're only gonna have your wording. And if we say, look at Ken's wording, they're gonna go, oh, twenty-five percent, great.
Well, I think just use it as a starting point.
Okay.
So they, they can adjust as needed.
Okay, do we have further discussion or can we move to the vote?
I'm done.
Okay, we're gonna move to, I'm sensing we have a difference of, of opinion here, so I'm not even gonna show, ask for a show of hands. I'm gonna do the roll call vote. Cassas?
Yes.
Tracy or Murphy?
Against.
Barker?
Affirmative.
McKinley?
Four.
Chapman opposed.
I said four, just so you know, I said yes.
Yes, I understood that, so it was a three-two.
Three-two.
We're sending it to the ORC with the idea to look at the fifty percent, you know, the amendment as, okay. Okay, um, our next item is.
Grab a five-minute break.
Okay, we want a five-minute break, okay. I've just lost my nerve to pass.
You're quick.
I am.
I mean, that was just amazingly fast.
God, you guys move fast.
So, are we, can we get you on the technology committee? Because I remember your eyeballs getting about this big when I said. You're kind of like.
I will send you all of the information that I've gathered together so far. So the big, the big short-term projects of this, one, get all the data on Camden recreational resources. Uh, think of, uh, uh, Ragged Hill, Ragged Mountain, the, the park that they have there. Marge Jones and Rockport RES. And then uploading all those into an online portal. Sue dates and all the scheduling. There's like lots of ins and outs where they were prior to be given to youth activities and youth leagues. They get inputted online. If there's blocked out, no one can take that. But any of the other times, you could reserve it, hit terms and agreement, and then that's what's reserved for you. So you show it to Marge Jones and everything's filled up. You could on your phone look and see, oh, the, you know, snow bowl's open. Let's go there. Reserve it, done. That's one of them. The other is the potential of merging the two. Camden would have to split their parks and rec committee, not their department. We recently, which is why rec dissolved. We split parks and rec into parks. And rec and parks went and ran with it. They're doing great. They're doing phenomenal. Rec dissolved. If Camden was to do the same thing.
Oh, the ORC will be thrilled.
We could then theoretically merge the rec departments just as we did the pathways. And the liaison of the pathways committee functioned so well. That's the other one. The other one that I've been.
I know. It was in my comments.
For a new backstop at the RES site.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, we'll get it to work, one way or another.
So, just, um, reaching out to the hospital, local businesses and saying, would you like to sponsor?
Yeah.
Sign up if you give us five hundred, seven hundred dollars. Thank you. I sent a doodle poll out about a week ago. I threw Stacy Para. I was actually meaning to send her an email saying, said, what did the doodle poll? Roughly sometime, not this week, but next week, in the timeframe between eight and nine in the morning.
And that Tracy has to have ended them by nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
You just have to go up at studio A.
Okay.
But I'll send all that to you in an email.
Thank you.
Oh, did he get you?
Yes, dude.
Awesome. Awesome.
I am so. The planning board will be having a public hearing on, on April sixth.
Dude, I got wrecked supposedly being off of my plate, you know, on some melting plate. Could you imagine an actual chair that put all the stuff together that I didn't have to do?
Did you get what you needed?
There you go.
Because the, 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 is what the people who need to have at the public hearing. And that is what has to be in the, it's not necessarily the filing. Cause the planning board can make like, they just can change in their language based on what the, what the public hearing results to them. Okay, but we had to provide them with what we anticipate being that language. But what is published in the newspaper has to be what they hear, what they announce as the reason for saying for or against or not. You know, neither for during their public hearing. That's where the starting point is. We haven't, we haven't sent it. It's only ten days.
From the seventeenth of March to.
Oh, okay, two weeks. Well, it has to be published ten days prior to, which means it has to be this week's public circulation newspapers. Which just happened to come out effective on Wednesday.
Well, nothing is more good than the process.
Yeah.
This stuff can wait another eight years or ten years. I agree with.
Yes.
I'm just, and I'm not making that a public comment. I'm just telling you, I texted my husband. I just saw. Actually, David just had his knee repaired, so. We've seen more of him than normal and they haven't, they haven't been talking about it, so.
And it's not even from last Halloween?
It's coming out of last.
Okay, well.
Don't, don't, don't.
Right. Right.
I'm, okay, I'm. School board thing, uh, school, whatever they're calling that committee.
Yeah. Oh, is that what they're calling it?
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you that, that the difference is any kind of, I don't know, any of the kind of texts.
What's a Southwest Corporation?
Solid waste.
Solid waste. Oh, solid waste, okay.
Oh, oh, oh.
Trick of the mind. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I could, I was just, what do you mean, Southwest Corporation? Municipal solid waste, yeah. And you're the attorney for them. I'm kidding, I'm giving you a hard time.
We're ready?
The OJ Simpson method.
Okay. Okay, um, we ready to get going again? Okay, we're back in session here. Uh, we're now moving on to the discussion regarding the Rockport sidewalk construction and preservation ordinance. Uh, it was pointed out to us that, that we really haven't been paying any attention to this thing since it was adopted in nineteen ninety-six. And that maybe.
At least not in recent years.
At least not in recent years. Um, and that, looking through this and laying it out against the master plan that the pathways, the Camden Rockport Pathways Committee has, uh, provided to us that really there's a lot of overlap and it might be in our best interest not to have our sidewalk construction uh, ordinance anymore. Ken, would you like to expand on that, please?
First to our attention from Will Gartley, who was looking at the high sidewalk issue for the engineering piece. And he looked at the sidewalk ordinance and found that in particular section ten requires all sidewalk construction or reconstruction to be submitted to the planning board for site plan review. Which seemed to be kind of an onerous requirement for that. And, and, and that's, that's the thing that had been done. Basically, it says anytime you even repave a sidewalk, you gotta have a site plan review. And that's, that seemed like a.
Well, that's pretty liberal. I mean, it says reconstruction as opposed to repaving. Repaving is maintenance.
Well, but, you know, putting a new curb on or something like that. I mean, certainly.
Why is that onerous to go to the planning board?
Yeah.
Cause that's kinda their job.
Here's my question.
Wait, wait, ju- just a minute. Tracy asked the question.
Oh, it was building on hers, sorry.
Um, it seemed like, you know, having to go through a whole site plan review for the high sidewalk was not necessary. Uh, that was the thought, um, at that point anyway. And for anything else, even if it was a minor reconstruction, this ordinance requires a site plan review. Because it says construction or reconstruction. Um, and so that was the impetus of, of having us look at this thing in the first place. And then when we got to looking at it, an awful lot of it is outdated. It refers to a zoning map, which is many iterations ago with colors on the zoning map and things like that. A lot of the, uh, uh, sections talk about, uh, areas where sidewalks should be and things like that. Which are now contained in the, uh, Camden Rockport Pathways Master Plan, which we recently adopted. Uh, so there's a lot of things in there. And, and also talking about best sidewalk construction practices and specific, uh, requirements for that. Um, you know, compact layers are not less than five inches. That stuff, in my opinion, does not belong in an ordinance. That belongs in rules and regulations. And, you know, an ordinance can say you should have best sidewalk practices, but not necessarily outline it because those will change with time. So, um, when I first sent this to Bill, he sort of flippantly sent back an email saying, well, we could just continue to ignore it. But then having said that. But having said that, you know, there's, there was some merit in the comment actually, which is that, you know, I, I don't know what this ordinance does for us now that the sidewalk master plan doesn't do. There's parts of this that are horribly outdated. And so it seems to me it's worth thinking about, um, you know, getting rid of it and, and leaning more on the master plan for where we want sidewalks, uh, and things of that nature.
So question, the master plan though is not an ordinance.
That's correct.
And so the master plan is the policy. And it seems to me to sort of undercut your argument by saying the master plan has adopted some of these things. So it's not that it's in two different places. It's that the master plan came after this ordinance, but the ordinance was, was so forward-looking that, that it, it holds today.
So if the ordinance were to say, refer to the latest.
Right, or something of that. I mean, the ordinance does, doesn't, the ordinance predates the existence of the pathways committee.
Right, so, okay, so I guess my question is, is, right, is this a situation where what you're saying is we need to get rid of the whole thing? It's really not serving any useful purpose? Or are you saying it needs to be updated, moved around? And things like the planning board be discussed as to whether or not they're appropriate?
I mean, I think that one way to update it would be to scrap it and start over. Uh, I wouldn't be opposed to that necessarily because, uh.
Another item for the ORC's agenda.
Right, and the only reason why I ask that, uh, the, the big thing is because the one thing that, that Rick talked about was the, the point about the, the planning board. And I'm kinda thinking for the high sidewalk at the very least, I think the planning board might be something well worth doing. Now, it might, the way it's currently written, might include more than what we want to ultimately include for sidewalk issues. But high sidewalks are very big deal. And I would say, from a personal standpoint, I would actually think it would be a good thing that the planning board would go over it for all of the things that they would go over it for. And the thought process they would put into it.
Plus, the planning board is the venue for which you have a serious dialogue with people who, uh, who want to comment on it, you know.
Your butters.
So, so to, to consider not having the planning board, uh, you know, not having an ordinance about sidewalks that includes a site plan review, uh, doesn't make sense to me. I mean, that's, that's what the planning was there for.
I guess the question then is how, where do you want the threshold to be set?
Well, I think, I think you could if you wanted to clarify, but I don't read repaving and I don't even read a replacement of the, um, of the curbing to replace. I don't see that as, uh, as a reconstruction. You know, um, I, I see that as maintenance. So, you could tighten up if, if, uh, I'm sorry, who's our favorite engineer?
Gartley and Dorsey.
Yeah, yeah, um, if, uh, if, if he wanted to, um, uh, tighten that up to clarify that, that's fine. But, um, uh, you know, the, the other stuff is actually rather prescient, I think, and it, and it's still, still working. And, and I know that when we had the go-arounds with the granite curbing here, which was, I'll re- remind people, a donation, uh, that this came into play, you know, quite strongly. So it, I don't, don't see it as, uh, as outdated or, or as that we're ignoring it.
So maybe you'll be, just submit to the ORC to. Review it.
I mean, we can.
Owen wants to mention something.
Um, so I.
Then you.
I talked and, and if you've got additional information, I, I would welcome it by approval of your husband. Um, so I was talking with Jeff Scott before I came here. And we were kinda going over this document just a little bit. And he, we were talking a little bit about the difference between construction by town or construction by a private entity. And how, you know, construction by the town, you'd think planning board would be kinda be part of the process, you know, according to first. Just a little bit overviewing, but then Jeff said, yeah, but at the same time, the whole planning board process is the check-in-the-box that you've done it properly. So do we wanna lose that good check-in-the-box of them doing the site plan review? And not just trusting that our public works is doing it properly. Um, and the other thing that came up in discussion is he, uh, thought that it would be a good thing for the pathways committee to spend some time looking this over potentially before it goes to the planning committee to get their.
ORC, you mean?
Oh, ORC, sorry. Uh, to get their two cents on it. It may add a little more clarity once it gets to that next echelon.
I have a quick question. Under what scenario would someone be building private sidewalks?
Uh, think about the, um.
The whole section nine of this is about.
Well, I.
MRC has the portion that, the sidewalk that goes down their driveway and then hits Route ninety and then stops and is terminated.
Right, that's, that's what I was.
Right, but we, when we officially.
I get that about nine.
Ju- ju- just a minute. Tracy.
Out where the Sammaset is and, and eastward and all of that area out there. When we accepted what was Brewster Point, they made arrangements to put in a sidewalk along there to connect with everybody else, which didn't happen because of a lot of things. So that would have technically been a public sidewalk being built by a private entity that they brought to us as part of that subdivision. So that, that would technically be a private entity building a public sidewalk.
In the public, uh, right-of-way?
In the public right-of-way.
Which then gets donated.
Well, I don't know if we ever got that far. And they didn't build it. So, because we couldn't get the other pieces from eastward and all the other people along that way. But the point was, was because so many people walk out on the street out there to find a way to get those people off of the street to jog or walk or whatever, rather than being out on Warrington.
Yeah. Ken, you wanted to say?
I was just gonna say that the section nine of this ordinance talks about construction by petition where people can petition to have a sidewalk built on there. And then they have to pay for the whole thing.
Right, right.
Um, and pay for the maintenance and, and all that kinda stuff. So I, I don't know that that section has ever been used.
Well, the question here is, do we want to ask this, you know, we're gonna be do- building that high sidewalk this spring or summer. The money has already been approved through the bond a cou- a year or so ago. Do we want to have this enforced and say, planning board, do a site plan review? How onerous is that?
So, go ahead.
It's just a quick clarity to my difference between town and private. I just wanted to expand on the town portion of it, just super quick. For something as gravitas as the high sidewalk, obviously, a good plan going through the proper process makes a lot of sense. But tasking public works out with some funds we found to take up the broken concrete pads and put down a new concrete pad falls under reconstruction. But is that something that should be submitted to the planning board for approval under site plan review? That's my, you know, where is the threshold of, it's a relatively simple thing, people, they're picking it up, they're putting a new pad down. They're not changing a grade, they're not changing the size of it.
They are changing the grade, they're changing the side, everything. They are changing the grade, they're changing the side, everything on the high sidewalk.
No, no, he's not talking about that.
I'm trying to make a differentiating. Where is the threshold between taking a flat pad up and putting a new flat ba- pad back to deconstructing a high sidewalk, doing major grade renovations and entire new construction?
Well, as it says in here, it must be, um, barrier-free access. And we've got a lot of sidewalks around that are not barrier-free. I mean, you go down some of them, and there's telephone pole right in the middle of it.
Yeah, we're working on that.
You know, and it's going right up Union Street, connect to the bicycle path. You know, if we're gonna do anything, it oughta be done so that it's-
This says that, you know, the, this barrier-free thing says that we can't even repave a sidewalk unless we get the telephone poles out of it. And do we wanna, do we wanna, I mean, it would be nice if that could happen.
Yeah.
Um, but, do we wanna, if it can't happen in a certain case and the sidewalk is crumbling, do we wanna not be able to fix it just because we can't take the poles out?
And you see that at sixty five?
That's a specific case, talking about the whole ordinance. I wanna go back to the whole high sidewalk, which is the reason why I, we were talking about it.
Brought this up.
And if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask Jamie a question, because when I was on the planning board, we never had anybody ask us any questions about sidewalks. So, what would someone submit to a planning board? And what would they, you know, as a site plan review, what, what boxes would they check off to make sure that they felt that, I mean, one of the things I know that would happen is that we would notify the neighbors, and that, that isn't getting done otherwise. Um, but what would the planning board, what would be submitted to the planning board? And what would the planning board use as their set of rules to decide whether or not it was the right, acceptable?
I think that, uh, overall site plan review would be, uh, too thorough and somewhat, uh, irrelevant to the public infrastructure improvement. But the idea that, um, public notice is being generated and the, the conversation could take place, there may well be some expert in that sidewalk who's walked it every day for a long time and knows something. And you wanna bring that person out. So, if there was some combination of, um, notice and a hearing, but not necessarily all of the, uh, traffic and loading standards that might be applicable to something that generates its own traffic, like a site plan would, um, the, that, that would be a good compromise. But the, the intensity of a sidewalk development is necessarily at or close to zero as compared to retail or school or, uh, some other kind of commercial development that, that happens to trigger a site plan and can't otherwise just be a building permit. So, we're not talking about development review per se. But if we're requiring a hearing, that seems smart. And there might be other ways to do that without calling it a site plan.
And I would point out that the high sidewalk is not the only sidewalk on tap for this summer. The Summer Street.
Well, that's the other thing I'm thinking about.
Including some of that, and that's not gonna be handicap accessible. Because it, it, it already has stairs in it, and then the s- and then the, the whole thing just stops before you get to the steepest part. So, you know, there's intention on- Yeah.
So, and, and the other reality for me, and that it gets away from this specific ordinance, is the other things that we bonded to get done, like Mill Street Bridge and all the other engineering things that we're talking about, right now, I don't think there's any reason that any of those will go through the planning board. For good, bad, or otherwise. I'm not saying that that's the right thing. I'm saying, I, I don't see it happening. So, I guess I would fall on the, it would be a nice thing, but if we're looking for input, that's kind of a different thing. If the only thing that the planning board would serve as is looking for outside input, then I don't think having a planning board meeting is useful. I think we would be better off having, uh, engineering meeting, and for all of the projects we're working on, invite people in to come in, notify them, anybody that's, that's close to the Mill Street Bridge, close, lives on one of the streets that we're reconstructing. If we're looking for input, that would be better. Is for us to sit down and say, here are all the projects we're working on right now that we're engineering. Come in and tell us what we need to know. So, somebody comes in from School Street and says, what about blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, and there is precedence for that, because before the reconstruction of Pleasant Street, not Mount Pleasant, but Pleasant Street, Mr. Peabody, the town manager at the time, called a meeting of all the residents on there to s- to inform them of what was going on and seek their input.
Right, so I mean, that's kinda a bigger question. Then, that's a bigger question than this ordinance.
Right.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Speaking of precedents, how in the world, with this being an active ordinance, how in the world would we not take it to the planning board? Even if that unfortunately meant a delay. And I will say that if we find, if our own town finds our town's planning board onerous, that might send us a message.
Yeah, I agree. That's what we have the planning board for. We should be able to follow our own rules.
Why are we so friggin' special?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think we do, we do have to look at how this impacts the infrastructure, but whether it's a high sidewalk in the Summer Street, one is another good, good issue, because if, if this, if we take this ordinance as written, we can't build the sidewalk on Summer Street.
Well, we can build it, but we've gotta stop before it becomes unusable.
Can we start it again once it becomes usable?
Access, you know, what is the term here?
Okay.
Barrier-free access.
So, the question that we're asking ourself is, what are we going to do with this ordinance? Right? That's what it comes down to. Do we try to rewrite it? Do we, and I, I would have to say from a personal standpoint, I would love to have the, uh, pathways committee take a look at it. They have brought us other good things in the past, and be able to say, here are some things that would be useful to refer to their master plan and to take out some of the very specific wording in here that's not appropriate in an ordinance. And then at that point, I would say it would be appropriate to send it to ORC in the next round, next year, and say, what do you think? How does this work? And then I'd like some more input from Jamie as to, you know, are sidewalks as a whole something that should rise to the level of planning board of whatever? I mean, because we, there's also, like you said with the, the, like, electri-
The telephone poles.
Telephone poles.
We call them telephone poles, the utility poles, really.
Utility poles, is that, you know, sometimes it's gonna be pie in the sky, that we can't move them out of the public way.
You can get around them.
Maybe, yeah, maybe the point is, is that you write it so it says.
Yeah.
This is what we'd love, but these are also things that are acceptable, that make and they keep that sidewalk accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would say personally, we should refer this to the pathways committee, and I don't know what to do about the high sidewalk. I mean, we can go through the planning board process, but if they don't have, it's not like a subdivision, it's not like a complete site plan where they're gonna ask about drainage and, uh, you know, elevation and all of that kinda stuff.
Says it is, though, that's the problem. It says, under site plan review, town of Rockport land use ordinance.
Right, and I'm saying-
But you know-
We don't have, in the ordinance that I know of, there's not a, this is how to build a sidewalk. There's not something in there to see those steps. So, maybe they thought there was going to be one when they wrote this, but it didn't end up or stay in the ordinances.
Well, the site plan review has changed several times.
Right.
Actually, in the, within the last ten years.
We did a couple of big changes, yeah. But there's nothing in there specifically for site.
Audience member with a question.
A question. It's my understanding that Will Gartley and Dorsky have already done an engineering plan for the high sidewalk, correct? Then the ordinance review committee can look at that and say, wonderful, or we don't like it.
But site plan review is a specific term.
That's, yeah, that's the issue, is that the engineering plan may not be enough. And I, Jamie would have to chime in on that.
I'd say just a tiny bit more, um, with the site plan doesn't seem like a perfect fit, so what does? And it suddenly comes to my mind, just this point about public notice. If we had received grant money to do the same work, we'd be holding a public hearing that matched the community development block grant standards. So, maybe I could share that with the pathways committee and say, here's a good benchmark. You know, if there's such a thing as a town engineer who doesn't have the patience for a public process, that's a problem. But it, it could be that site plan process is still too high a bar. And so, we just have to maybe dial it back a little bit.
But isn't that under the purview of the, the committee itself, not the, the, uh, planning board, to, if they have no written guidance to either, you know, to, to do something reasonable with the request? I mean, so-
We get through-
Yeah, so-
That's a tough situation to put them in, where if there's no written guidance as to, I mean, subdivisions, other site plans have pretty specific-
Yes, yeah.
Things that you check off, that many of them would not be relevant, or-
How would we decide how much parking was necessary?
Easy, you say zero. You know, and, and, you know, that, that's, that's what I'm asking, right, yeah, I mean, you just, you get that body together, and if they're, you know, if they're doing reasonably well these days, and if they have reasonable members, they say-
I think if, if a planning board applying its site plan approval process, however clumsily, is a way to take our time and write a better sidewalk ordinance, instead of getting the ORC to rush it, that's great. We'll get through it.
Learn from that and, and, and-
It's a hell of a question to decide who should get noticed of such a public hearing.
It's in a lot of letters.
Well, and the thing is, is, but, eh, when it's a public hearing, it's gotta be published in the paper, too. So, it's gonna appear in the paper that they're reviewing a site plan review for the high sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
We'd probably try to lump them all together.
And I know, I read every single-
But I would, I would list each one of them, if you were doing all, whatever you're doing. So, okay, so what are we gonna do?
That's a good question.
So, I think, are we saying it should go to the planning board and this document should go to pathways?
Yes, on both.
Is that where we are?
I think that's where we are. That's what I've been hearing.
Should planning only get, uh, a brushed-up copy after pathways has looked at it?
No, not enough time. They gotta have it now.
In effect, it's not standing.
They would have to do this, it's next month, cause planning next week is doing what? Are they, they're having a workshop, aren't they? Are they-
They already had that.
Oh, that was, I don't know.
Yeah. Regular meeting on the usual thing.
Because it was last week during, during, um, budget. That's why Tom wasn't there. So, d- and do you have, he didn't go to planning because he was at budget. So, the one that's the fourth Wednesday of the month, do you have anything on that agenda yet?
We do.
So, they're already meeting.
Actually have no specific notice requirement, so we could hurry up and put an ad in the paper on the, no, we couldn't. Unless it's, we, we couldn't notice it, yep. It wouldn't be noticed with a twenty-third.
It's two weeks away?
Yeah, no, it's, it's less than two weeks away.
It's next week? I don't know.
And there's no specific requirement for notice for a site plan.
Well-
So, you know, I don't know what to say to that. Maybe we should just go for it, and there'll be nobody-
But, but we have to make sure that Rick and whatever powers that he has that be can get a plan to you in time to do that. And I don't, we have no way of knowing where that process is.
Have the plan, because it had to be into the bid specs. And those bid specs have gone out.
So, the bids get specs already going out.
Come back, have, you know, I'm not sure, but-
That's what's really unfortunate about the position where the-
It's already done.
For the design to go that far, and then have some resident say, you know, over here is where I need the break in the fence, or whatever.
Well, there is no break in the fence on the high sidewalk.
Well, but, yeah, the point is, if, if a resident says that something needs to be different, no matter what it is, it's-
Okay, so, I think we should ask Rick, or have Jamie talk to Rick about getting something into the planning board for the next meeting. And I think we should refer this ordinance to the pathways committee in, in the view that next fall, it will go on ORC.
Yes.
Is that good? Does that-
As long as we can, I, I, as long as we don't have to, you know, have some of the infrastructure stuff get held up because of this. That was the, the major impetus of doing it. And then, and then in looking through it, I found out how outdated it was. For example, it refers to the three village post offices.
We don't have to worry about those.
We don't have to worry about that at this moment.
And it doesn't deal with schools and students.
So, the only other thing that I would ask you, since Rick isn't here, is to give him a heads up that any of the other sidewalks that are part of any of the other roads that we're working on need to go through this process as well. And I don't know what the timeframe is on any of those. You, you might know more, but School Street and-
I've already sent Rick an email saying to watch our video about two hours and forty-five minutes into it. Actually, I said two hours and thirty, cause we took a break.
Watching now.
He's probably watching now, but he's probably sound asleep.
He hasn't responded to my earlier email.
He's sick.
Yeah, he was not.
So, that's what I would ask. I, I think that's where we should go. Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to do any of those things? Was that a motion?
I don't think we-
So, much.
I don't think we need to.
Do we not need it?
I don't think we need a-
We, we asked the pathways committee to, to take a, you know, look at it.
And I think in general, Mr. Lee-
Is that a plan?
Yeah.
That's a plan.
Okay.
General, Mr. Lee, this, this could be slimmed down quite a bit.
Okay, so that's a plan.
Uh, our next item, next item is also from last month, um, about provider agencies and whether or not we want to consider returning this to town funding to the town budget. Um, and the implication is either, do we wanna make the decision that we're gonna do it for next year? Or do we wanna put it to the, you know, put a question to the voters to see in June if they want us to consider it for the next year's budget? That was pretty much where we left it last month, when we were talking about. Cause right now, it just, whoever applies goes to us, and we say yay or nay to put them on the, uh, as an addendum to the tax bill in, in October, or the August, I guess.
Did it go to vote for us to get us to this point, to go from, so?
It was, it was a, it was a decision by the select board to remove it completely, because, well, the select board proposes the ordinance to the town, and the way, under our type of govern- our form of government here in this town, the voters at town meeting can reduce, but they cannot increase the monies that are being expended or voted on. Which meant, when the select board said zero, well, you can reduce the zero, but you can only reduce it to zero. You can't increase it to anything other than zero.
For one who was there, it, it went down in two, over the course of two years. It was half and zip.
I was on budget when that-
Yeah, I was too.
I, I guess I don't necessarily think we have to put it out to a vote. I think we can just propose a warrant article next year when it comes time.
It wa- it would've gone as a separate article on those earlier, but, yeah, it was always a separate li- uh, line, yeah.
And then we would also have those provider agencies do what they did in the past, which was to give us why, well, no, why they wanted that. They filled out the form and they said, we would like three thousand dollars because of you have three thousand residents and we'd like a dollar per resident. Or we served X number of people. So, they gave us a number, and they gave us a reasoning behind that number.
But they also came in, the budget committee controlled that completely.
Right.
And if they said yes, it went yes. If they said no, or they cut it to another level or increased it, that was what it was. The select board did not have anything on that. It was all budget.
Recommendation, but the budget committee is the one who met with the provider agencies and then came up with the numbers.
Yeah.
And so, I wonder if maybe in this consideration process, should we ask the budget committee to chime in on how they might like to have this process go, as far as what the application would be and what information they'd like to have to make their decision?
Yeah.
If we're gonna do it that way.
I, I actually really like your, you proposed two options, and I like the proposal of taking the question of whether we start doing this again to the voters as a vote, because it starts that dialogue. And I think it would be very, it would be very instructive for us. If, if it's seventy, thirty, don't do it, well, then we know. And if it's sixty, forty, do it, there's a lot of good dialogue there that, that helps us in the whole process. So, rather than it being a divisive thing, board versus, you know, potentially enlightened board versus, you know, reluctant citizens, I think taking it to vote is actually a really good idea. And it, so.
We'll get this in for comment.
I, I had asked that question to try to figure out precedent for why it was taken off, to see if following that same precedent, we could put it back on. Uh, I'm not at all opposed to putting it to the voters. Um, you know, I can be convinced of something as simple as that. Yeah, I mean, I don't-
Yeah.
I don't mind. The, the only thing I was thinking is, is it's, it's another comma, necessary, but another thing we need to go out of our way to educate the public on. Necessary, sure, but I feel like we've got- But I feel like we've got fiber, library and a handful of other things that we need to do public information pushes on. And have these listening tours, we've got it with the middle school, so I'm not saying it's not necessary at all, it'd be a great discussion to have. But it's another big push we have to do on our end to get the information out there.
And you, you see it as a big push, cause I, I see it as a very individual, of the things we're talking about. It's the thing where a, a, an average citizen could just, they already ha- they've already made up their mind, so I don't think that there's a lot of work on our part.
Except before joining this esteemed board, I had, if I saw provider agencies, I saw provider agencies sitting on this board and I said, what the heck are those? So there is some education you're gonna have to do of the general community to even understand what provider agencies are, what they do. And what our funding mechanism is to them.
Uh, ye- yeah, but, but that gets down to, I, I think that gets down to what you're talking about is what the budget committee does, which is evaluate each of the, each of the requests coming in. I think the overall question.
But you have to know what it is, like if you just say, would you like to raise money for blots? And you don't have any idea what blots is, you're gonna just say no, cause you're asking me for money. So we do need to give examples of what's happened in the past and exam- maybe examples of why we approved it.
So seventy-six, I'll, I'll, I'll write this, I'll write this one.
I mean, just realistically, I remember when New Hope for Women came to us and told us how many calls they took. And how many people called for help from the hospital and said, you know, we do something you can't do. As a town, this isn't a service we provide, but is a service that is critical for the people in, in our community. And that was an incredible argument for me, that we were never going to put a committee together to help people that are victims of domestic violence. But for, you know, five thousand dollars a year, whatever it was, we could make a real difference in supporting this nonprofit.
Yeah.
So, for people to have that kind of information of the kinds of people who've come before us in the past and what they asked for. And that anybody out there who has a nonprofit that serves a certain community, they could come to us and fill out this paperwork. And ask us for five thousand dollars too.
Right.
And, and the, the application indicate, how many residents of Rockport do you serve?
Right, 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 I, I, I think you're both getting into the weeds and you both get the Jeff Parker award for the night.
Thank you.
Because I know that I do that.
Let's move ahead then.
But, um, but re- you know, we can, or I can craft a fifty-word, if that, question. To go on the ballot to gauge the, the, uh, the, our, our constituents.
If you look at our next item.
It's everything going on the ballot.
Unfortunately, I think the reality is, because we have so many different things covering so many different constituencies. We may indeed need to write fifty words for each one of the things that we are putting on the ballot.
And that was my, my thought is, are we getting too many things out there for the voter to keep track of?
We are, and I, and for this particular one, I would say we should hold this for fall. I don't know if we have anything else that typically goes on the ballot in the fall, but we are, we do have a huge number of things going on. That people may or may not understand.
And if I could, uh, speaking from personal experience become, before I became more involved. On some of the more arcane little things versus just who's running for president. I would educate myself literally in the ballot box attempting to decipher your fifty-word briefest.
For a lot of voters, it's the first time they see it.
And so the thing is, is how do you get out in front of that, like we would for the fiber? We're not just gonna have fifty words on the fiber and expect them in the ballot box to, to figure that out. Do we do a pre-push was what, I like what you're saying as far as make it concise on the ballot or on the warrant itself. But, you know, it kinda behooves us to do some front-end loading.
There's, there's really not much loss by holding it till November, because if we adopt it, the budget committee is not gonna start to consider it until shortly after.
And, but, but my reality is, is Linda, and I hate to put you on the spot, but. All other things the same, do we have a reason to have a November ballot for the town?
We very well might have.
So, so if we have, we're supposed to put the library on, so if we're already, if we already have a town ballot. Then putting, I don't know, putting this next to the library may not be the best logical thing to do, but, um.
I have to put it next to.
I'm, I'm, it can go either way with me, but putting it on the ballot, I think is a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
I think it's okay, I, I'm not convinced it's necessary.
Since I, I think we all are in agreement that it's worth asking.
Yeah, I think we wanna move, whether we put it on the ballot or just propose it as a warrant article, I think we wanna move in the direction of, of going back to funding the agencies.
So, but those are two different things.
Yes.
So do you want to ask people if they want a warrant?
I'm okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so that's what we're planning?
Strongly in favor, but I'm okay with it.
Unless anybody else just wants to do it, cause that seems like that was your other option.
That, that is perfectly genuine, because we were the ones that.
Right.
We quote.
Just put it on as a warrant article for town meeting.
Next June, not, not this June, next June, so.
Bless you.
I, I guess, that's a question we need to ask ourselves and maybe vote on or take a straw poll. Whether or not we feel it is best to just put the provider agencies on as a warrant article next year. Or if sometime between now and then, in either June or November. To ask the citizens whether or not they want us to consider provider agencies again. Those, that's.
Those are our two.
And I don't know who falls where.
I mean, I'm, I'm lukewarm on the, on the, uh, question of asking the voters, I think I could go either way on that, I'm not strongly opposed. I think the warrant article would be the best explanation we could have, because that'll say, here are the agencies we wanna fund and here's how much we wanna fund them. But I, Jeff's point about, you know, sensing the, you know, the public's, uh, mood on that is well taken. Um, I think, as you pointed out, I don't think we have to do it in June, in fact, I think it might be confusing to do it in June with all the other things that are gonna be on the ballot. So waiting till November, I don't think hurts us at all, if it's approved in November, we can start the process in plenty of time to, to get the numbers we need for the next June warrant article.
And, and the one thing that kind of tips me towards just, just doing it would be that if we did. Put it on the ballot next June as a warrant article, it would list exactly who we are supporting. And then you don't have to do all of the big background information. You can say five thousand dollars for New Hope for Women, you know, two thousand dollars for whatever and.
Red Cross.
That's really pretty clear to people what it's for and why we're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sorry, why do you think, i- did you say that we wouldn't have to go through the two days of, of the budget committee hearing?
Well, you wouldn't, but the budget committee would.
If we put it back to them, like.
Right, but we would have to put it back to them if everybody agreed to do it anyway. I mean, either way, if we move forward with that to actually making it happen, either after hearing that everybody said yes. Or just putting it on the ballot, the, the budget committee will have to go through that.
So, last, last word on this, I, I think what my observation is. I don't think people approve or disapprove because we choose the Red Cross as one of the, as one of the provider agencies. I think for people, it's either, it's, it's something they've already made up their mind about, but we don't know how many people stand on either side of the fence. They've made up their mind, they say, this is something a town ought to do, this is something a town ought not to do. I don't think it matters who we give it to or how much. I think what we need to gauge, because we have no idea, is what proportion of our citizens would say, that's absolutely inappropriate. I don't care who you give it to, on one side, and on the other side, they say, absolutely. You know, the town ought to be supplementing and as a town, as a community, we should be doing that. And I don't think that's a hard question, it could go on this June, it could go on in fall, you know, November's fine, because we can institute it in time for that. But I think it's valuable information to us.
Here's what I believe to be my last two cents, I'm only gonna push back.
Said that an hour ago.
I said, believe to be, oh, on this topic, this topic only, wait till we get onto the next one. I'm only gonna push back just slightly, I, I agree with you in the general sense, but if I was like, hey, uh, do you wanna give five thousand dollars to. An organization that helps veterans, or, or one that like kills kittens, that's different to me, you know? So I'm just a little pushed back on, people don't necessarily care. Uh, if you have something for the, the Maine Audubon Society, the birders will love that. Versus if it's New Hope for Women and they all think that women don't need help, you know, you just never know.
I, I gotta see, I gotta, I gotta give you a pass for the ki- dying kids, because you haven't been through the process yet, but they're all good.
And the only other thing that I'll say is, I would be comfortable, because I feel that that is kind of why they elected us. To simply have a vote right, not necessarily right now, but as a board to put it on. Uh, not on the warrants, but just incorporate it in general, because they can reject it at town meeting, all the monies that we put into it. That's a way for the citizens, there is a check for the citizens to say, we didn't approve, you guys did this over our heads, we're just not, we're gonna cut all funding for it. So I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to us having a vote and saying, we are doing this now. If you all wanna reject it at town meeting, go ahead, but putting it on a warrant and getting citizen input, I'm never opposed to that, but that's kinda why they elected us.
As you remember, people always look for a reason to say no.
I don't, uh, do we need to actually do a straw poll, cause I'm not quite sure where anybody stands here.
What we don't have to do is worry about anything for this.
The question, the question, oh, so we're just gonna wait until November and make a decision?
Have a further deci- discussion on this after the June vote, you know, sometime in July, August or September.
We all think it's a wonderful idea and we're going to push it off till summer to make a decision on how we want to go about doing it.
That's a good summary.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Check. And that was the last thing I said on that topic.
Except for right now.
No, 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 no.
Okay, we will discuss this again in August or September.
Too long today.
Let's now move on to the, uh, items that we have to place on the warrant. Now, I've listed some that are just talking about things that we've been thinking about. Our primary purpose here is to take a vote to say, on the plan, the ones that have to appear on the planning board public hearing. It's the second sheet.
Okay, I'm on the wrong sheet, I'm like, what happened?
Department, we have to move to place these on that public hearing so that the publication can go out. Stacy has until nine o'clock tomorrow morning to say, this is what's going on and this is the wording. So she can tell the newspapers, so that they can get them into this week's publication, which is in time to get them out in time so that the.
Okay, so.
We're gonna vote on these tonight, we're gonna vote on them on Wednesday, is that what?
No, we need to decide tonight, yes or no, on each of these and the wording. For the ones that have to be done by the planning department, which, yeah, there's the one sheet here that says, it's headline planning department.
See that, but I'm reading in here, it says, these will be voted on in the final draft.
No, forget, yeah, no.
No, different, those are different things.
That was an earlier version.
We starting at the top?
Well, no, let me say this, sidewalks at the bottom of that page, we don't worry about, we've already decided. And the next page, the road acceptance, we already have decided how we're dealing with those.
Oh, both of them, so both of those are gone, okay.
Cause we're sending it to the ORC, so we have the five items that are here. The first one is FEMA update, whether, you know, actually, we've got to adopt the floodplain.
I move to accept the FEMA update warrant article as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And how is it written?
It, this just says, shall an ordinance entitled, ordinance amending the Rockport, town of Rockport floodplain management ordinance. Adoption of which is mandatory for continued participation in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program be enacted.
And there's an extra set of quotations in there.
Something wrong here, I'm like, yeah, do you have the same one that we have? I, I would hope it came from you.
No, cause he, he sent something out after it.
I'll look on on Tracy's.
Hey, we'll go to our new copier that's in the other room and.
Yeah.
Is it here? I heard it was going to be here.
The part that should be in quotations.
I think you just delete the quotation after program.
Yes, yes.
No. Okay, where's that quotation mark go?
It, the ending.
Just get rid of the one in the middle?
No, 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 the one after.
The one at the end, get rid of the one at the end.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor? That one is passed, sewer ordinance, and I will read this one. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the Rockport, the town of Rockport sewer ordinance. To delete the fee schedule so that it will appear in the related sewer regulations instead. Clarifying the roles and responsibilities of the, single quote, commissioners, end quote, authorized representative. And there's a problem right there.
Yeah, there's another one.
And make another, other corrections and clarifications throughout be enacted. There is an extra single quote that we just remove after the word authorized representative.
That's an apostrophe.
Thousands of.
No, it can't be an apostrophe.
Commissioners, the commissioners can have the apostrophe, but not authorized.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I see, I see.
Oh, so that is right.
Well, that was correct.
Yep.
Ooh, nice, okay.
Okay.
So there's an internal.
There's a problem, Ken, and we're not gonna be done with it by Thursday.
Are you done with this?
Yeah, we're done with the part we did.
But it says other corrections and clarifications throughout, that the planning board needs to go over before they're willing to hear it.
The plan, this is the question I had for you in the intermission bill, the, the ad will run in the paper on Thursday, this very Thursday. It will say, draft amendments available for inspection at the town office, and that will be true. But Ken and I both know, we're still working on the last, you know, round of red lines, and so.
Yeah, but it's.
Can we say to the public, come on in and see where we're at, I think it's totally legitimate.
It's a draft.
Okay.
A draft is a dra- a draft is subject to change, that's why it's called draft.
I was just gonna say, and the planning board often makes changes.
Yes.
So, things will change.
Okay. We have a motion.
I made a motion.
Yeah, didn't I second that? Somebody seconded it.
I didn't hear either one.
I moved Tracy second.
There we go, we're good.
If you'd like, for a discussion, you can get rid of the little quotes around commissioners, authorized representative. The point is, it's already got enough of a tip-off that it's a defined term in the ordinance with those capital letters.
So you can get rid of the after representative and before commissioners, but we have the one after commissioners.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an apostrophe.
That's an apostrophe, we're all good.
Okay.
Can we vote now?
And can you all make me comfortable with the make other corrections and clarifications throughout and how ambiguous that is? Because you guys are continuing to work on it.
Minor stuff, basically.
I just don't like saying, yeah, to ambiguity.
But, what we're saying yes to.
Is just getting it to the planning.
Getting this to planning, cause planning could be changing any of this stuff.
Okay, so you've made me comfortable.
And it is fairly minor stuff.
And I figured, but I just, I like clarification on it.
They're always like this.
Times, it's just referencing to what is be, the ordinance that's being changed.
Okay.
Not to the specific words that are in there, cause you gotta go dig through, and when we did the sewer ordinance, I mean, practically threw out the old and brought in a new. And we didn't put all of that, cause that was, what, fifty pages?
At least.
Yeah, but it went from like two hundred and fifty pages down to fifty pages.
And, and because it was such a major revision and going back through it, we're finding these little issues.
Issues, okay, we good with this?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna tell for the vote, all in favor? That one's unanimous.
Who wants to read this one? Somebody take it from.
I will.
Yeah.
Section eight oh five point three private ways, shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance. Section eight oh five point three private ways to allow the code enforcement officer to issue a permit for some private ways. That currently require planning board approval to clarify what materials are required to support an application and to impose a requirement for notice to a butters for some private ways. Close quotes be enacted.
Second.
Moving second, it, it struck me as you were reading this, that it's real good until you get to the section eight oh five dot three. Dash private ways, and then you say, to allow the code, shouldn't it be, be amended to allow the code office, code enforcement officer? Because we're amending.
No, the ordinance amending. Ordinance amending in the first line.
You jump right to allow.
Yeah, the amending is already there, it's just for.
Oh, okay, okay, I'd say.
And, and just as a point of clarification, this is for the three people on one street kinda thing?
Right, it's, right now, there's, it's requires, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, the ordinance requires a planning board review for two people on a private way. And the, what, the shift is to take that out of the planning board and leave it with the CEO, three or more requires.
Okay, which makes perfect sense.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, I think that's the way.
That's the basic.
What?
Am I reading this right, that the ordinance is actually entitled, quote, the entirety of that paragraph?
Yeah, if you notice, they're all like that.
Okay, cool.
It's not good English.
Yep.
It's better English, way more better.
Yeah, did you wanna say something?
Oh, I was just gonna explain to Owen, uh, before he asked, that, um, um, this, this is in alignment with the ability for someone to take their own lot. And cut it in half for their, for a family member, and, and that, that two is a magic number.
Okay.
And three is then another.
Basically allows a back lot to get.
Like my house.
With a smaller footprint than normally would be acceptable for a law. With a smaller footprint than normally would be acceptable for a lot.
Necessarily, cause the road, the private road, it still has to be constructed at certain specifications. There has to be a plan. It just re- removes the planning board piece. Cause the planning board application is, is expensive and time consuming.
And it's for a subdivision.
Yeah, oh, and this is following in line with what Jamie's been doing, the push to make it easier and not have to go. Planning ORC, run the entire gamut. Okay.
No, this is for somebody who wants to divide their property and put a house out in the back lot.
Yeah.
Like my house.
Yeah, where they don't have to come to the planning board to get that. Yes, if they're gonna pull a full subdivision back there, three, four lots.
They do three, then you're a subdivision and they fall under a.
I would've said yes to your question, Owen. The, the point is it's relaxing some of the review requirements. And in the language of the question, the only suggestion I had on that one was, the last time we used the words private ways. I might say applications, because the notice to a butters is not required because of the fact of a private way. It's because of the, an application for some kind of approval. So if you take out private ways.
In all of them?
Just the last time it appears for some applications. It's not very, uh, critical, but wanted to make sure it got through. Twenty-six minutes on the phone with the town attorney is worth something.
Are we changing private ways to application?
The last, in the very last line, yes. Yes, please.
Okay, applications. Alright, any further comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Owen's gonna read the next one.
This one. Downtown. Shall an ordinance entitled, quote, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance, section fourteen hundred. Dash shorelands zoning, section nine seventeen, deck, land use table, section nine eighteen, tech. Dimensional table and section nine thirteen downtown, which would clarify the permitted uses and standards for development. In a portion of the section nine thirteen downtown zoning district, end quote, be enacted.
Second. And can I ask a question then?
Yeah.
Is this, is this the down, down farther in downtown? Is that the?
It's, it's this whole block and the Taylor, Taylor Allen lots and things like that.
But the Taylor Island lots are under something different than up here? Is that what it was?
It's basically some minor corrections to what was done last year at this point, anyway. Um, and, and it involved shoreline zoning, so some words had to be changed in that section. We went through the, the tables as well, the land use tables and the dimensional tables, just to sort of mostly clean everything up to what was there before.
Okay.
As we get on, the, the ORC wants to look more closely at the whole nine thirteen district as far as other permitted uses are concerned. And maybe makes, in fact, they wanna do that soon after. You know, rather than waiting till next November while it's fresh in their mind.
They wanna do it in summer.
They wanna take a more comprehensive look at that whole zone. This is just sort of cleaning things up a little bit from what was done last year.
All clear? Any questions? All in favor? Yeah, okay. Um, the next item, this one actually appeared for both of ours, um. Because it was notes that I would, I had taken, but the ORC has come out in favor of doing this. This is the MUBC.
Just say M U B C.
MUBC.
As we, yeah.
MUBC, yeah. Okay.
Get with MUBC.
Um, I'll read it. Shall an ordinance entitled main uniform building code, which would increase life safety requirements for new construction. And significant renovation work as of July one, twenty sixteen be enacted, question mark.
Is that right? Uh, second, but should an ordinance entitled?
Well, it's, it's a little more, uh, editorial.
Bad sentence.
Yeah.
It's a very bad sentence.
After code. Right, main uniform building code. End quote. And it says what it'll do, I think that'd be better.
This one has a few missing ingredients. This one's definitely missing some ingredients.
Yeah, but there's, it's not.
Which I can go over.
Okay, what do you have?
For starters, the, the location in the ordinance is section six hundred building permits. That's why it's a, a land use matter.
Mm-hmm.
And the, uh, advice from the town attorney was that, uh, when you're adopting an ordinance. That's already been written by somebody else, it exists, you're doing it by incorporating it by reference. And you need those magic words in your warrant article. And, um, the ordinance itself. The third requirement is that it has to make clear what are the penalties? So if you're gonna adopt an ordinance that's somewhere else, you know, we're gonna take.
Okay, do you have that wording?
Got it. And so the, um. Best way to share that with you guys, I guess, is to walk it around. But I also had, um. Left off in the conversation at January one, two thousand seventeen, and I think.
We, the, this, this morning in our discussions, we decided July one, twenty sixteen.
As, and you know, and that has budget implications and so that's why we were dealing with it.
Okay, why don't you read to us what you think that ordinance should be? Or the, the warrant article should say?
Shall an ordinance entitled, ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance, comma, section six hundred. Dash administration. Um, by adopting and incorporating by reference, the main uniform building code. Effective July one, two thousand sixteen. Which would increase life safety requirements and construction standards. But make no change in the legal actions, enforcement powers and penalties for violations be enacted.
Can you read that last part about the penalty violations?
Which would mean that the penalties would be the same as they are now. So if you don't get, if you don't pull your building permit, there are penalties. And if you, all those things that we've already approved.
Cool. Okay, and. And but let's see. Make sure that Stacy gets this. If we do approve it in a minute or two.
So the one question I have is. Given what I've heard back from the ORC and from the planning board, neither one of them was interested in. Pushing forward the energy part of it.
True.
By what we're seeing here, is that specific enough to say we are only adopting, we are only considering adopting. The main uniform building code, building portion, not the energy standards.
You guys speak about education and marketing and it seems really smart to have that show up in the question.
And I just wanted to be really clear, because like I said, the feedback I've gotten both, both from ORC and planning board. Is that they very clearly said they were in favor of the building code, but they were not in favor of the energy part.
So can we amend that paragraph to say, and the wimp said ORC won't put in the energy code?
No, not gonna amend it that way. But we could amend it to say.
I just wanna make sure that it's clear, because for me, I would go, well, maybe that's the whole thing. I, I don't know that this is specifically just the code, because I don't know exactly.
Well.
What the name of the separate section.
What's missing is energy, the word energy.
Yeah, the word energy.
So without the word energy, then we aren't adopting that part.
Right, there's no question we got the name right, but the point is, will the average voter say, oh my God, they're giving us the whole shebang?
So we say, please note that the energy portion of this.
This is something, again, we can, we can approve this for publication.
Right, 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 right.
The planning board can change it or bring it back to us with a suggested change and we can then amend it and change it before we place it on the warrant. Come our April, uh, select board meeting.
I think that's significantly better than this. That doesn't really mean much, but, uh, it's better.
So I'll move Jamie's language and maybe you should pass that to Linda. Put the July, I gotta, I gotta fill in your July.
First, twenty sixteen.
July one, twenty sixteen.
And do we need another second?
Second, I don't think we ever moved the first one, so I just moved this.
And so I seconded.
Yep. Okay, are we good on this?
Are we doing discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe I voiced this before.
Mm-hmm.
If we took a vote and what I'm saying now contradicts the vote that I made, then please correct me and, and I will stand corrected. I have never really been a big fan of taking the energy part out. That's one of the few things that I had said. I believe would, would be a cost saver for them over time, putting better windows in or the different R factors in. Would, would actually, they would realize that additional upfront cost over time. Boom, break even. Now I'm doing cost savings going forward. So I just, I feel that maybe it's my job to just. Bring back the energy component and are you all still not a fan? Cause I'm not a fan of the whole thing. But if we are going to do this and put it to the voters, I would like to again propose the energy portion because. Though the resale value and getting people to come buy houses here in a town that has a building code. Robust like this is good for the resale value or people coming in to buy, but people that aren't trying to then sell their house. They only know that they have a sturdy house, not a house that saves them money over time.
Second.
Thank you.
I will speak, was that a motion or was that?
Nope.
No, 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 I was, it was, it was a show of support in, in the fewest words available. Take on this is that the building code has to do with safety, like safety, public safety. And so that's why I, I'm in favor of that. The energy portion, yes, it will save people money, it will save people energy, but it's a voluntary thing.
So is the building code?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. Currently, it is a voluntary thing.
It's, it's life safety. It's a di- for me, it's a difference. You may disagree and that's okay. Um, also. Budgetarily, the cost to the town of the energy piece is many times what the cost of the building piece is. Uh, in terms of inspection requirements, it's, it's quite a bit more, um, and so in, in a difficult budget year. And I think, and what we have talked about, and, and I've had this conversation with Jamie, is we can have the energy requirements there. And if a bill, if an applicant comes in and says, okay, I've gotta meet the building code, and they may ask, well, what's the si- situation with the energy code? We can then have the information on hand and tell them, well, we don't, our, our town has not adopted the energy code, so you're under no obligation to do it. But if you're interested in what the energy code is and you wanna comply with it voluntarily, then here's the information and you can do that. And I think quite honestly, a lot of people probably will. I don't think anybody's interested in building an energy inefficient home around here. But I'm, I'm not in favor of mandating it.
And, and while we're still in discussion, the, the guidance from the town attorney about the penalties is that it doesn't have to. Be a buzzkill and appear in your question. If it's very clear from the draft language that is available at the town clerk's office. What the penalties are. And so we need to figure that out. You know, I cannot, I can very easily put the giant three ring binder of MUBC down on Linda's desk. And say, there you go, public, it's available. But, um, what I ought to do is try to. Figure out if I can call out the sections that show the penalties are not any worse than what we have today. And then maybe it doesn't need to appear in the warrant question itself. But that part I'm not sure of.
Well, the warrant question that you gave has had that penalty clause and I think that's fine.
It covers it. It just, to, to Tracy's point, you, when you wanna advertise something, that's a lot of vinegar. And not honey.
To add just a little bit of clarity, cause I feel like I know where Jeff and Ken are at. Where are you two at as, as it relates to the energy portion?
I think the same person would follow it. But again, you know, as Ken said, the cost of, of implementing that part of it is far greater. Than the cost of implementing just the building code component. We can't adopt just the energy portion. But we can adopt just the building code portion.
And Owen, something we spoke about in the past that really turned Jeff's light bulb on, I remember. And there's this interesting left white, left, right consensus thing going on. Because it's voluntary, remember that. You're the one reminding everyone. Because it's voluntary, this gives us a chance to learn part of it, get good at part of it. And then as we get more skill, we'd have more confidence of going out in the field and doing that stuff.
But we're only getting skilled in the building portion, not the energy portion.
That's what I mean. We're able to do it step by step, baby steps, because we don't have that four thousand population.
I mean, at the same time, I know that Scott is CEO for towns that have adopted the whole thing. So he's already doing this in his other work. So the stepping, that, that part of the stepping argument. Doesn't mean as much to me, just from a personal standpoint. And I guess since everybody else has said their piece, I guess it's my turn. I, 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 in my house that I just redid, I just spent more money than I wanna talk about on energy. I replaced all my windows and doors. I put our forty-eight in my ceiling. But what makes a difference to me as a citizen of the town is the life safety stuff. And that for me is critical. And if we aren't making sure that the building can handle the load. I, I, I just, that is so much light years more important to me than energy standards. And anybody who has the money. Is going to look into that. You're not gonna rebuild something and say, you might say, I can't afford it right now. Like we talked about doing, which we found out that it would be more expensive to have somebody come back and blow more stuff into our ceiling later. So we found the money this time. But, you know, it's a huge hardship that we chose to undertake. And if I had not had the, the, the ability to do what I ended up having to do, which was incredibly painful. I would have, I could have saved easily five to ten thousand dollars not doing those energy things. Like windows and doors and insulation. And given other circumstances, I would have made that decision.
And you would've still had a safe house.
I would've, but I would've had a safe house, because we did take things down that were unsafe and we put them back together correctly. So from a very personal standpoint, I say, what I care about is in the long term, that we are making sure that we have safe buildings. Being built from here on out. And people can choose to do the other things. You can go back and put windows in later and put insulation in later. But when somebody cuts the trusses of something, it's not that easy to fix. Or some of the major things that we saw.
Yeah.
When we, when Carmen came here, in here and gave her presentation. The.
Insufficient foundations, supports.
The energy things can be fixed later. And people can choose to spend that money when they feel confident that it's the right thing to do. I mean, cause some days, honestly, I still wonder if I made the best decision for my house, given other issues I'm having with my house now. So, but if given the option, I don't think we should ever support people building something that's not safe. And that's what this would put into place.
And just to follow up on that, you all know, when it comes to public buildings, cause you're talking about. Public safety, health and safety concerns, I am in agreeance with you. The biggest discrepancy I've had with this that is does not just do public building, it's private buildings. And I don't want to, you're saying, people have the choice to, they, they can voluntarily do the energy efficiency things. And if, you know, there's a lot of onus on that, I'm trying to put a lot of onus on their ability to build a house the way that they see fit. And until we are required to do that, I don't think we should be.
Okay.
But that, and you've said that before. I'm just, my reality is, I think we should. That was the question you asked me. I think that as a community, that's one of our, one of our, uh, charges. And I think that I would have been happy to have had more inspections to make sure that my contractor was doing things that were safe. Because I don't have a way of knowing.
Right, you said one of our charges is basically to mitigate people from doing dumb things?
Yeah, absolutely. I do think. That's why, why do we, why don't we plow the roads?
We are getting off topic here. The, this, the question is in front of us is whether or not we want to put this into the public notice. So that the planning board will hold the public hearing on it come, uh, April, which then comes back to us for our final vote to place it on the warrant.
And our recommendation.
And then to take a recommendation if we so choose to place it on the warrant. It, this isn't saying it has adopted if we take a yes vote tonight. It's not adopted. We can't adopt it ourselves. We can only recommend to the population of the town, the voting population, that they adopt it. And they can still turn it down. This is just one step on the road.
Our recommendation or not will go on the ballot.
Yes.
So when we get to that point and you say, no, I don't recommend this, it will go on the ballot.
Yep. And you may very well be asked at town meeting, why did you not recommend it? Or coming up to, you know, be- before the town meeting, because this will be on the secret ballot. So I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor of placing this into the public notice? To have the planning board hold their public hearing? Okay, I have to call a, um, a roll, a call by name. Cassas?
No.
Murphy?
Four.
Arthur?
Affirmative.
McKinley?
Four.
Chapman, four. The vote is four in favor, one opposed.
So we get through that whole page?
We got through that page.
So now we're going to the next page?
Now, these are ours that we are considering. Um, or in one case, we're gonna put it on whether we want to or not. Um, or in one case, we're gonna put it on whether we want to or not. Um, but these.
Bring that one up since we haven't had the executive session.
That wasn't what we were having the executive session for, I don't think.
I thought there was something in there, but maybe not. Okay.
Well, that's, I thought that's why we had to have that executive session on Wednesday.
Yeah, we've got to hold that.
Okay.
Number three?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Starting at the top.
We're gonna start at the top. Um, and this is just the wording that we have at this point. It hasn't come, been through the uh, legal review.
Can I ask a question before we jump into these? What are we voting on about these tonight?
They're, just that we are considering it so that we can make sure people know about it for our next meeting.
So this isn't being published?
That's when we will.
It's just saying, these are the ones that we are considering and these are the drafts, because obviously the first one is a draft. We're gonna make other, I, we're gonna make decisions on the next week.
What?
Right.
The MR.
Okay.
Well, actually, we probably should hold off on that.
Right, because we don't know.
I felt, I thought you guys didn't like the next week or so, we're gonna be doing that.
Well, actually, yes, we're gonna do it on the twenty-first.
Yeah.
And then there'll be a meeting of all the town select boards on April fourth.
Yeah, to tell them.
Tell them what the recommendation is and why. So, yeah.
So I mean, the only thing.
Are we gonna be able to notice that in time if we?
The only thing we can say here is that the, uh, the, let's see, Midco Solid Waste will make a recommendation that this board will have to decide how they're gonna put that on the ballot, because we're gonna have to put something on the ballot about solid waste.
Yes.
So we're talking about a Midco Solid Waste recommendation. So I guess you would say something like, shall the town, uh, enter? Adopt the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste regarding, uh, regarding disposition of solid waste after March thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Is that a good, is that a good sentence?
Yeah.
Awesome.
We need to, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Now, what you just said raises lots of red flags based on the timing. Because this is going on the secret ballot, we've got to hold a public hearing for it. To hold the public hearing, we have to have enough time before those things have to go to the printer for balloting, for the ballots. Which means.
Well, we need the date, so we need to work backwards from that.
This says the public hearing is Monday, April eleventh.
That is our public, but we have to be able to put out the notices to what we're proposing to adopt.
Let me remind you that the school system puts a, if what you're saying is that we won't have, you know, we don't know that uh, MRC Fiber Rights could be the ones, or you know, whatever you're saying. The school puts a secret ballot in that says, do you approve the amount that was done two days ago? So we don't have to, you know, we don't have to say, and the winner was. All we have to say is do you.
Well, that's why I said it.
Yeah.
The recommendation of Midco Solid Waste. Shall the town enter into an agreement proposed by Midco Solid Waste for the disposition of solid waste after the termination of the current contract, blah, 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 if we need the rest of that. I don't even think we need the rest of that. Um, but March thirty-first, twenty eighteen, cause that's the point. That's the recommendation Midco Solid Waste will make in the next week or so. What we, what we plan to do after that.
We have the time to be able to get that notice in the paper for our public hearing on April eleventh. Because we will be holding a public hearing.
Sure, yeah, we've got tons of time.
Okay.
But I mean, that could, that could be, that could be the wording.
That's another week.
That could be the wording that carries us through to.
Right, we don't have to change it.
That's true.
Because we, I, I would presume, given that two out of the five of us are on that board, whatever recommendation Midco Solid Waste comes up with, this Rockport will go that way.
Yes.
We won't, you guys, yeah, I know.
Well, okay.
Well, that was a.
That's why, if you don't like the way we recommend, guess who's gonna be on the board next year?
You need to come to all these meetings, cause we're having way too much.
Okay. I've been to all those that were.
We've got it.
Do we have further discussion?
Okay, so I made the, the, I rewrote it.
Yep.
Did we get a second on that?
Yes, I, it's second.
Jeff did.
Okay, so do we vote on this?
We haven't yet.
Okay. Linda, can you read back that wording to us, please?
Um, she said it two different ways.
Oh, did I? Well, I'm sorry.
That's kind of why I asked.
Shall the town enter into an agreement? What did I say? Based, uh, based on the recommendation of Midco Solid Waste?
Do you want to be more specific?
It should be Midco Solid.
Waste Corporation.
Midco Solid Waste Corporation.
Okay, so.
For the handling of municipal solid waste.
After March thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Well, can we take the first part of the sentence and say, uh, shall the town of Rockport accept the recommendation of?
Okay, that's good. Accept the recommendation of.
Sorry.
Midco Solid Waste.
Oh my god. What if they say no? I'm sorry, I'm just, oh, I've been doing this too many hours today.
I know, but that's how it was adopted, how has it changed?
The citizens?
Which they is.
Right, what if they vote against it and we have no place to send waste?
Back up, let's get back to what the point is here.
Right, crafting the.
Yeah. Shall the town.
Accept the recommendation?
Accept the recommendation.
Of Midco Solid Waste Corporation.
For the disposition.
For the disposition of the solid waste after.
I think the rest.
March thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
You don't want to put the termination.
You don't want to put the termination with perk? We could, yeah, yeah, let's put all of that.
Okay.
But it should be municipal solid waste, not just solid waste.
Okay, municipal solid waste.
After the termination of the current contract with Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation.
Once the thing comes in, we can just put in parentheses, accept the recommendation, you can put in parentheses, MRC Fiber Right, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Can we also add to this language, the parentheses, capital P E R C? To, cause I know that people are familiar with.
Yeah, after.
Just try to give them some basis.
That's helpful. So after Penobscot Energy Recovery Corporation, parentheses, P E R C. That's true, cause we talk about perk all the time.
Okay. We have that now.
Are we good?
And it's been seconded and amended and seconded and everything else. We know what we're voting on.
I second the amendment just to be sure.
We're just gonna vote on the whole thing as is.
Just wanted to make it.
Okay.
There is one more land use item, um, that I put in an email, but that not everyone has seen before. Because the ORC finished its slate and didn't have road acceptance yet to work on. Do you want to hear about it or just save it for the future? It's the affordable housing question?
I'm totally unaware.
Yeah, that seems like a really big question for.
That's the one that you said came up in the audit.
Just strike two lines of, in the table and we're done, but still, we're, a lot of discussion that maybe we just need to have.
It was, it was a, it came up in the audit when the, Jamie went to the audit of, of the five units or more, five units or less, it could be found to be discriminatory or something like that. So it's a simple fix, I think.
But it's like Tracy said about the other thing, it's been going on for years and it can go another half year or year.
I don't want to make any new decisions at ten forty at night.
Put this for the November one.
But it is in our emails if you want to go.
But November is fine.
Well, it, but it's not.
Accepting it into my.
No, 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 I'm just saying, no, 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 I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. The next one we have, and this is the one we will be placing, and we're just gonna take the vote to place it. Um, quote, to see if the town will vote that any reconstruction, expansion, improvement, renovation, or replacement of the Rockport Public Library be limited to its current location at One Lime Rock Street, end of quote. This was a citizen's petition that was placed to us. It was properly s- uh, certified by the town clerk. And as a citizen's petition with a sufficient number of, of valid signatures, we will put, we, I'm sorry, we shall place it on the warrant, but we have to vote to place it on the warrant.
Does anybody else have input on this? Trying to think. Planning Board?
I don't know. Mr. Berry this evening told us that we do not have, we cannot make a recommendation. I'm gonna have the town attorney check on that with the town attorney.
I'm advised you cannot put it on the warrant, as you normally do.
We can't put it on the warrant?
You can't put your vote on the warrant.
And that's what we're gonna have to verify.
Okay, so.
It's not a land use uh, item in a typical manner, um, so that it doesn't go to the planning board.
Because I was thinking more of like when we sell a piece of property, that, that planning and or conservation, I think both, have to weigh in on selling a piece of property.
Selling it.
So, okay, I'm sorry, that was, okay.
That's a transfer.
Yeah.
So I make this motion to place it on. Do we have?
We have.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Was that?
No, no, no. No, but I had a different, so this was something that, um, Jan brought to my attention. Uh, don't know if it has any bearing on this, not really, because they certified it and everything. According to him, he's a little confused on the actual address of the library. He does not believe that there is, and we could, we could both be wrong.
It was legitimately changed to One Lime Rock.
It was.
Yes, and.
He was saying that maybe it was not.
No, it was. The, there was one or, one group that is, that failed to pick up on it.
That's what I was trying to do, if you want to.
And I don't remember which one it was, but it is, it was changed. It was taken to the proper officials to do that. Somewhere, one of them decided, well, we don't care what they said, we're gonna leave it at, uh, Russell Avenue.
Something Russell was what Jan was.
Doesn't matter. It was changed. The library petition, and I talked to Kerry about it. And Kerry said, it was changed.
Cool.
And it's on our tax records, it's One Lime Rock Street. That's the point.
No, that works for me. It was, and it was only because he had brought it up as a, I'm a little confused about the physical address. No, that works for me. It was, and it was only because he had brought it up as a, I'm a little confused about the physical address. So that's good for clarification. Thank you.
It also goes with your point, this is addressing, not land use.
Yes. But we have any further discussion? All in favor? It is on the warrant.
So we're taking this one off for the time being? The third one?
Yes.
So we're taking this off and we'll talk about it Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay, so we're basically tabling it to Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item is, um, what do we want to place on for fiber optic engineering? We discussed it this morning during our budget workshop. I'm not sure we really came to a conclusion other than, yes, we want to ask a question, but do we want to ask this on the secret ballot? I think we, I know we decided that we were going to take the line item for the three hundred thousand dollars for that and make its own separate warrant for the town meeting, the public town meeting. Um, did we want to put a question onto the secret ballot? For, you know, to get the flavor of the citizens of the town? Jeff wants, Jeff is all.
No, no, I'm just baffled as to how we could do both. I mean, doesn't, um.
We can't appropriate money in a, in a secret ballot question, is that correct?
Not the way we're organized.
Right, so we can't, we can use the question to gauge the, you know, feeling of the town, the citizens, but we can't appropriate the money that way.
Right, so we have to have the question, I mean, the, the odd thing is, is what happens if, you know, I mean, you, you guys know me, I'm, I'm all for, for asking the town what they want.
Yeah.
But in this situation, what they want has to be a function of what happens at the actual town meeting. And which, so people have to understand that they need to be there if they want their particular voice heard. Therefore, putting it on the, on the secret ballot feels like, oh, well, I've told the select board what I want, oh, look what happened. You know, and so that's just, you know, one day, you know, from one day to the next, it's, it's not like, yeah, we asked the question here and then three months later, we had a, we had a vote at, at the congregation, but uh, it just seems a little.
I said that this morning. I remember hearing myself say that this morning. That why should we have two different questions on two different days?
Okay.
If we're gonna ask for the money, we should ask for the money, but why should we ask them the day before? Do you think we should do this?
Okay.
So I'm all for not having this, but having the budget item personally.
We've already decided we're gonna have the budget item.
We have to have the budget item.
Right. But we don't have to have this. So I, this morning, had thought this was a strange thing to do the day before, asking for the money. No, no.
You know, when we're in the public meeting and can make the decision not to, which really, we can just make it by not even having a motion. Never mind.
Okay.
It's getting late.
I know. We've been at this for a long time today, on the weirdest day of the year.
We're not gonna put that question on.
Okay.
So we have two questions that we are putting on that we will be holding our public hearing on.
And we're putting the pri- provider agencies off till.
We're holding that until November. We will discuss it sometime in August or September.
So the only thing that's still pending for us is the third item that we'll talk about on Wednesday.
Talk about that on.
Okay, the ones on the back are all gone? We've all done these?
That's all been done.
Okay.
As for the land use odds and ends, we've sent road acceptance to pathways. No, road acceptance to the ORC and sidewalks.
Sidewalks going to.
Pathways, pathways first and then to ORC.
Yes.
Where are we?
We are now, this, we want to discuss appointing non-residents to committees. I might suggest that at the hour that we are at, that maybe we want to, uh, dispense with that one until next month.
I'm all for that.
Yeah, since we've already done it, I don't know how much more we can talk about it and make rules for it.
Well, yeah, that was what we were gonna do, you know, what were the limits and what kind of committees?
So we're gonna make rules next month?
We'll make rules.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Uh, the next one is to change the job description of the library director and adult programming.
Move to approve the changed job description for deputy library director and adult services librarian.
That too. Second.
Moving second. It is before us. Do we have any questions? Um, we can't ask the town manager what changed, but we can, uh.
I mean, it looks good to me.
Looks good to you? Everybody else? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? We've changed it. Um.
I make a motion to approve the changed, the changed job title from executive secretary to executive assistant.
Second.
Yep, it's moved and seconded. I have no idea why this came up. I was gonna ask the town manager tonight, but he is not here. Yes?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just convoking.
Oh. Any discussion? All in favor?
I did, I think.
Yes. Um, there was a request on behalf of Paul DeRaps for a payment arrangement on his property taxes. It was presented to us, um, apparently he was a little late on paying the tax, but um, actually, he has paid his twenty thirteen taxes in full. And he's worked out an arrangement, uh, for paying, uh, the tw- for the next twelve months for the twenty fourteen and first half of twenty fifteen taxes.
Um, is he, it's, I can ask Linda, it said, it's in foreclosure status now?
Actually, foreclosure status was as of February twenty-nine. Three or four days after that fact.
Okay.
So therefore, we sent a redemption letter and as a result of that, they're supposed to pay two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and one half of two thousand fifteen. He is not able to do that financially. So Rick and I had a couple of conversations and I've spoken to Paul DeRaps. And we had made a, um, agreement and the payment was gonna be three twenty-seven, but he came up with a second half of those taxes, so then it brought it down to two hundred and sixty dollars. He said that's durable, he's willing to sign an agreement to that.
I guess my question is, do we, if you've made the arrangement with him, do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Cause it was in foreclosure.
Yeah, it's come into foreclosure.
Okay. So what does, we don't have a suggested motion here. Do we have to, I don't know how.
I, I move we approve the settlement. Um, the settlement arrangement.
Good evening.
For the payment of, of property tax by Paul DeRaps.
And do we need to have map and lot number?
Oh, fifty-two Lime Rock Street.
Um, which is map lot oh three oh dash one one seven, according to this bill.
We should say it Tuesday.
At, at two six, yeah, I mean, I was referencing, okay, at two sixty per month.
We, have any discussion on the, was it seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Keeps him in his home.
And not doing a abatement, so if he can.
And it was all because he was four days late.
Right, if he, if he makes an agreement and. Right, if he, if he makes that agreement and can live up to it, then we're all good.
Here because he was four days late.
Veteran. You say he's veteran here. Or at least he applied for the veterans exemption code and the homestead.
Okay.
I would say that Owen, I believe that was because it's under the estate of his mother, so she qualifies for his living.
As a widow, okay.
Yeah, life estate.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, further discussion? All in favor? We are done with that.
Talk about the calendar on Wednesday?
We, I've just presented it to you. First of all, though, before we get to that, because Midco Solid Waste has jumped in with their workshop on April fourth, which was gonna be immediately after we held our legal services R F Q workshop, I would propose we delay ours two days until the sixth, Wednesday the sixth.
Okay, wait a minute, what are we delaying?
The, our legal services R F Q workshop, this is where we're putting together the R F Q for legal.
So just the workshop to talk about the R F Q?
Yes.
Not accepting bids or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're moving that to where?
To the Wednesday.
Wednesday the sixth?
Wednesday the sixth.
Five P M?
At, I'd say we stay with the five P M, unless you wanna move it up to four P M.
We wouldn't be able to do it here, I have to.
No, no, well, this is just a workshop, it's a town office.
We should be doing, yeah. Okay, so we're moving it to April the sixth?
Mm-hmm. If that is acceptable.
Works.
I'm assuming that there's nothing else going on, but I'm looking.
There's the planning board, warrant article, public hearing starting at five thirty.
Well, and I have to say, I'd like to go to that.
Okay, do we wanna move this one up to four? Can we move it up to four?
Okay, for me.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna make this four o'clock?
Yep.
And then I can go, come over here to the planning board.
Yes. We'll have to have the information sent out, we, we got a couple of months ago, but.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Okay. I've got the draft calendar here for twenty sixteen, I'm just presenting it to you. You know, do it as you want.
Oh, do I have yours?
Yeah, I've been looking for it, sorry.
I stole his.
How it got there, it's this one.
No, that's the today, that's today.
Oh, that's, I don't know, okay.
Doing all my marketing too.
I don't know how I ended up with that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Next item, before we go to wastewater, we've got the town manager's review coming up.
And we're gonna have to move at least one of those dates because of May.
And we gotta move one, yep, yep.
Because for some reason, it doesn't show up, it shows that Owen is gone part of that week, but the next, I, yeah, and I've got a whole lot of time, I'm gonna be out in May.
Oh, okay, if you put it on the email calendar.
It is, but it's not showing up here.
Okay, I haven't gotten it, I didn't get it copied over.
Um, okay.
I've been working budget.
Really, I can't imagine why.
Yeah, so, but you've given me those dates, I'll make sure that they're.
F Y I?
Yep.
I can Skype into but not vote on anything that you guys have in the evenings, basically after five or six, I'll be back at my hotel room with stuff to, nothing to do other than my own stuff, so I can be electronically available during that week, but only basically from six, five to six P M on.
Yeah, and right now, we don't have anything scheduled for that. But what Tracy has pointed out is that on May sixteenth, we had tentatively scheduled the executive session for the manager review, she's not gonna be here. I would suggest moving it down to the twenty third, um, combined on the same day we do our wastewater budget workshop. If that is all right with everybody.
Same time?
Uh, one of them start at four and the other one will start after the executive session.
And we also have to do all the stuff.
You've gotta do all the stuff. I know it's been sent out a couple of times, but I will send the evaluation.
The new, the, 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 this year's evaluation.
This year evaluation.
And if you, if you want me to compile it, I would be happy to do so, except my schedule's gonna mean you have to get it to me much earlier.
Yes.
I'm gonna be gone for most of the first
Two months.
Two and a half weeks of May.
Okay.
I have to go to Cleveland, too. So I have to be honest, you're gonna have to, if you want me to compile it, I'm gonna, because we need to get it to Rick at least a week before we meet with, oh, but we're meeting with him on the twenty third.
Right.
So I need to get to him by the sixteenth, but I'm gonna be out of town the sixteenth.
Yeah.
So, we're still talking, I need it by the first.
Okay.
Are you out of town on May ninth, Tracy?
No, I will not be out of town May ninth.
Cause I may be, there's a regular select board meeting, I may not be here for that.
I'm gone the fifth, sixth, and seventh to, uh.
And then the thirteenth.
One, and then the thirteenth through the seventeenth for graduation.
Okay.
I just asked us that, that would bring the form.
Yep.
Right, right.
Okay. I got here, no can. So, we know we're gonna have it due, May one, to Tracy.
And then I'll try to get it done, maybe before I leave, or maybe I'll work on it, I might have time to work on it while I'm in, in Pennsylvania. But I'm not gonna have time to work when I'm in Cleveland or headed to Cleveland.
Okay.
Cause I'm driving.
Okay. Let's, I entertain a motion to become wastewater commissioners.
I move to close as a select board and move to wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor? We're wastewater commissioners, let's commit.
Where's that number? Motion to commit the December twenty fifteen wastewater user debt fees totaling one hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Move to commit the January twenty sixteen wastewater user debt fees totaling nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
I move to close as wastewater commissioners and go back into session as select board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? We're back as regular. Do, um, just a couple of notes here. We've got the middle school listening, wait, that's not right, Parks' presentation is coming up. But what we are also having, and I, yes, it's next month, the, um, what, Midco School of Technology, or whatever they call them.
N C S T.
Yeah, down there is coming to talk to us about their expansion, rebuild, renovation plans. Uh, they got apparently shot down in their attempt to move to Warren because they, state won't allow them to have a school, even of that kind, on a major highway.
Any school.
Any school, yeah.
Fifteen miles an hour is the problem.
Um, so, um, but Parks is also gonna be presenting to us. But we can do it out here on I ninety.
No, because that happened before they changed the rule. They changed the rule that you can no longer have a school that requires a fifteen mile an hour, well, which all schools need fifteen mile an hour, you can no longer have them on the major routes, which means that both of our schools on Route seventeen, no, Route ninety, would not have been allowed to do that at this point.
Okay.
Another exciting topic.
You know all about when Midco Solid Waste is holding its meetings.
And you guys need to come.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information and we're, we're getting more in, so, I, I I think it's very good if you have questions. We've had three out of the four applicants appear before us. I don't know what kinds of things you've pulled from that, I know I've come up with some very, very clear thoughts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are waiting to hear from, actually, Paul Gibbons about, well, through the executive committee as to what the contracts look like and how those may or may not be good for us.
Mm-hmm.
But we are going to meet next Monday and next Wednesday to make those decisions.
A regular board meeting is on Wednesday.
So we're making the decision on Monday?
If we can make the decision on Monday, that just reduces the effort that we have to put in on Wednesday.
So next.
We're meeting Wednesday anyway.
Monday, we're gonna talk, the executive committee's gonna tell us more about the contracts. We may make a decision on Monday night, or we will make a decision on Wednesday.
But there will be a public hearing starting at seven o'clock on Monday night.
So.
Five thirty, at five thirty, we're meeting to hear from waste management. Then six o'clock to seven o'clock, Paul Gibbons is gonna briefly brief us on what the implications of the contracts are.
So wait, on this twenty-first date, I should change that to five thirty instead of six if I wanna see the W M presentation?
If you wanna see the W M I, yes, be here at five thirty.
You need to change that in the calendar, cause if you don't, I won't show up on time.
But I got it on here.
There are just too many.
I know, there are just too many things.
At the same time, because of the miracle of livestream, all of those presentations are online. So if you want to go look at those, they do exist, you can go have the same amazing experience that we've already had watching these people present.
Yes.
So far.
Yep.
You just shouldn't miss this kinda fun.
I know. And.
So April fourth is the Midco Solid Waste where they're presenting officially to all the solid waste members.
Where Midco Solid Waste is presenting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it is.
Either, either Monday the twenty-first or Wednesday the twenty-third of next week, Midco Solid Waste Board of Directors will come to a conclusion as to what they wanna recommend all for.
And we're gonna start at five thirty that night? I'm changing.
On Monday night, yes, I just changed.
Well, it hasn't appeared on Monday yet.
I just changed it.
And that is, that's not here, or is that televised?
Monday night is televised here.
Yeah.
But up there, right?
No.
No, right down here, right where we got all the cameras.
At six o'clock.
Five thirty.
Well, yeah, five thirty.
Well, because they wanna get that presentation, that's the point, is having all four presentations available for anybody who wants to have the experience.
Okay.
But the, the board of directors meeting on Wednesday is gonna be at the town office.
At the town office.
And that won't be.
And that will not be televised.
That's our regular meeting.
Yes. And if we do not come to a decision on Monday night as to what.
We have to on Wednesday.
We will make that decision on Wednesday night, even if we're there until midnight.
Oh, fun!
Yes.
Mark that one down.
Okay, any other liaison reports you wanna make tonight?
Uh, O R C, you basically heard all the results of that tonight. Cemetery has not met. Conservation Commission, you heard the results of that tonight and I know the difficulties with the budget there, I tried very hard but didn't succeed in getting them to produce a proposal, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'll work on that for next year. Actually attended Legacy Rockport this evening, which was Charlton and Linda, and that was it.
Oh, God.
Cause we are, I am gonna work with them on a concert to benefit the library through Legacy Rockport, and they seem to be excited about.
Is that gonna be down in the community hall, Symington Corner?
No, right here.
Oh, cool. Oh, that's the one for Ben, that Ben Blackman's been talking, no.
No, the one for Ben is, is Thursday here.
This one will be in July, weekend, the weekend before the one from the fifth stop.
Traditional jazz band.
New Orleans jazz.
Yep. Okay.
That's all I have.
Jeff, anything?
Nope. I, um, so Parks hasn't met, I was not able to go to Pathways, cause we had a budget meeting that evening, but I talked to Jeff tonight. He said, uh, there's still a lot of energy happening in the Camden-Lincolnville border region over the Route one north
Yeah.
proposal, et cetera, et cetera. He also, so I said, uh, he said, bring up the work groups, I said, the subcommittees, and he said, I was just told that town committees can't have subcommittees or are test, so they're calling them work groups, so he said, refer to it as a work group. Remember, I had said they wanted to break out subcommittees to focus on the Route ninety and focus on the Riverwalk and focus on this? So, I don't know, according to him or the Camden people. So, uh, the work groups have been formulated, I'm on the Route ninety work group specifically, not any of the other ones, so they've been formed, but they have not yet met. And last thing, cause it's precollating in my brain, someone had said something about a new cheesemaker and piping their cheeseway into the sewer.
Tofu maker.
Tofu maker.
Out at West Street Market.
But there's still whey, and I just, maybe I'll do it on my own free time. The question is, that's, that's a, that's a resource, cheeseway, you can feed it to animal, or, or any sort of whey can be a supplement for animals, so for them to be spending money to dump it into the sewer and us to have to test and see, it's just one of those things, that's a resource that maybe shouldn't be dumped into our sewage system. Just saying.
Well, they already went to the planning board.
It's a very useful thing.
The planning board, that's what that engineering money was for, was to test what was coming out to find out if there were gonna be sewer implications. In other words, the amount that he was dumping was gonna be enough that they were concerned that it would dilute. No, that it would dilute the high quality sewage.
Here we go again.
It's true, the high quality sewage that we send to Camden.
Yep.
So the, so the, the planning board asked that that testing be done.
Oh.
So, but if you have your own interest, you should probably talk to them.
Just.
I mean, if they can, if there's value, they can sell it, I wonder why they wouldn't.
Who are they again?
No, this is, um.
Bean curd.
What is it? Hiwa tofu that's going into the, what was it, the West Street Market?
Market.
Which used to be State of Maine cheese.
No, 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 this is out on Route ninety just before you get to high school.
This is right in front of the elementary school.
Remember where Mama's Boys Pizza was?
Yeah.
Next door.
When the gas station, right next door.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.